Okay. We're live? Thanks, Jim. If I can get everybody's attention for the October 3 regularly scheduled town council meeting, Councilman O’Connor, would you lead us in the pledge?
I join in to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Sue, can you do us the honor of attendance?
Yes, Councilor Biggs.
Present.
Councilor Carbone.
Here.
Councilor Forrest.
Here.
Councilor Hill.
Here.
Councilor Lesser.
Here.
Councilor O’Connor.
Here.
Councilor Pentlo.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Mazarella.
Here.
And Mayor Rell.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. On our agenda, we do have a presentation by the Beta Group on the 2022 pavement evaluations. As you guys recall, every so often before us on council, we get a map of the town, and it does tell us the priorities of some of the roads that need to be paved. Even though that is a priority for us, unfortunately, there has been illness with one of the members who were going to present that to us tonight, so they are not going to be in attendance. So we’ll just pass over that presentation. I’ll move down the list to Item A, Public Comment. There is a hearing. This is the amendment on Ordinance 175-2, Conveyance Restriction -- is it Conveyance Restrictions?
Restriction on certain streets.
Okay. On certain streets, Meadows Access. Anybody here from the public to speak on that portion? Mr. Young? This is the entrance gates to the Meadows off of Great Meadow and -- okay. Not seeing any. I will -- I hear that hearing is closed. Now we move to two general comments from the public. Anybody here to speak on any general matters before us? Yes, sir.
Nick Raschew, 125 Walcott Hill Road. I’ve got a few. Do I have three minutes or five?
Here you have five minutes.
Perfect. So I’m going to jump around a little bit and definitely appreciate some of the feedback that came through from the last meeting. First and foremost, proud Charles Wright parent, there’s a broken slide. So if there happens to be a way that we can fix that, that would be lovely. It’s been broken for a period of time with caution tape. I think, first of all, it’s a liability and should be taken care of. Secondly, in that same vein, I have not seen the language that was released to the Elections Enforcement Commission. So I called the S-E-E-C today, and they told me it has been submitted. So I did not -- they told me the Bond Commission had released some language. I haven’t seen the draft of that or an updated draft subsequent to the last meeting. So I’d like that to be released to the public. And sort of shifting gears from that, Mr. O’Connor, completely agree. My first issue with Magranicus, first of all, the contract bid is expired, so the proposal is expired on the 30th. And again, understanding the town manager’s comment, in my career, I’ve dealt with large and small software vendors. I’ve never seen a 7% escalation on software, ever, in private industry. It’s always been a reduction. And I would also add to that, that in looking through it, the service that’s actually applied within the general membership agreement is very basic. You have to look at the service level agreement to see that anything beyond basic service is an extra cost. It’s not built into the bid. To me, that’s unacceptable. Moving on from that, which I think that should be denied, I absolutely cannot imagine that contract being signed off on regardless of municipality or private industry. Moving on to the MACE discussion, looking through asset forfeiture and regardless of people’s view on constitutionality of that and what that exists, I looked today at Monaco Ford, the vehicle that was in the quote, no longer exists, Monaco Ford. The price is currently in there. There are two in stock, one for $73,095, which was the stock number that was mentioned in the bid. The other is $84,410, an increase of over $20,000 that I know the cost is approximate, and in Medina’s bid, it said that. I’m surprised at that and surprised that we’d want to put that money up regardless of where it comes from, civil forfeiture or otherwise. In addition to that, and reading through the proposal from Mercury, it says that the cost will be $9,299 related to half the equipment required for the two stations that are required, if it’s not in public, charging stations at the ATM service. That’s required. They have to hand dig because they don’t want to cut any trunk lines, which I agree with. In looking through and actually contacted Mercury Group, I said, “Where’s the bid coming from? Numbers don’t add up.” Come to find out, that $92.99 that says half the equipment cost is after all the rebates and all the ever-sourced funding that, to my knowledge, no one’s applied for yet. The actual cost, in talking with the representative from the company that signed that letter, was between $23,000 and $25,000, a multiple of over two that no one seems to be caring about, which is beyond my comprehension. Moving from that, I guess, the part I’m confused about with the MACEs is that we were just told earlier that it’s not used in patrol, but the upfitting is over $14,000 for lights, light bars, sirens, et cetera. My question, which is not rhetorical, is how is it going to be used? I don’t understand why we’d spend $159,000, but my calculation is closer to 200, on two cars that can’t be used on patrol. That, to me, regardless, again, where the money comes from, seems ridiculous. And lastly, I wanted to bring up the public comment for me. Obviously, I live on Walcott Hill Road. People saw the news coverage, saw the videos. Understanding NextGen was put in place for computer-assisted dispatch, I am shocked. The response, I watched over, I’d say approximately 100 to 200 high-performance vehicles fly by my house, not one police car. I saw videos, I saw one police car that was dispatched through 200 vehicles. That, to me, is absolutely just embarrassing. I watched them. I stood on my front porch and watched for at least eight minutes, what cars revved up and down the road, not one police car. We could talk about resource allocation. I get it. If more vehicles is the option, great. For the life of me, I cannot understand how they can shut down a major intersection with all the cameras that we’ve got and NextGen with the capabilities that I was able publicly to find out, that we have no capability whatsoever to stop that from happening, or at least have a better response time. I’ve seen response times that people said between seven minutes, 14 minutes, somewhere in that area. The police department is at the end of Oxford Street on Silas Dean Highway. From there to the Jordan Lane, Walcott Hill Road intersection is, I don’t know, maybe less than a mile. Seven minutes for a police response for that is incredible to me. So I know I jumped around a lot. The numbers, in my mind, for a lot of these things just don’t add up. And the more I keep hearing about the numbers, the more I read through everything, it seems like people are very liberal with money that’s not theirs, and I think it needs to stop for this town.
Mr. Young?
Robert Young, 20 Cockburn Mill Road. Tonight you have on your agenda for the electric vehicles for the police. Mighty high price for electric -- I mean, I don’t know what electric vehicles cost, but, you know, up against what cars cost, it looks like it’s pretty expensive. And money isn’t expensive. I mean, it’s like the government is buying these things to push the public to buy these things. And that’s the way I see it. And I don’t think it’s right in what they’re doing. You know, police are getting a high-powered vehicle out of this, where today, police do not chase the people that they’re trying to stop, or someone who’s robbing stuff, or chasing them down the highway. You’re not supposed to be chasing them. You don’t need these high-powered cars. You still need them. Unless you just want to sit somewhere in them. But I really find the price kind of ridiculous and extremely high. Next on the agenda, I think you had something here regarding some management solutions, a $38,000 investment that’s supposed to make our people, get our people to be more efficient. I thought they were already efficient. I guess, I want to hear, is this going to reduce a head somewhere, or two heads in here, if you spend this kind of money on this solution business? Or is it just going to be same-old, same-old after you spend the $38,000? Nothing happens afterwards. Just a question, no answers. Looking at the spreadsheet that you put out tonight on the agenda regarding money that you want to spend, a lot of money. And I really wonder about some comments that were made earlier during that meeting, an hour ago, half an hour ago. You know, one person said that they want everlasting results out of this. Another person says this is an investment in our -- hold on. Everlasting results regarding spending money on sports fields and sports stadiums. That’s what it was intended. Another person said, “Oh, this is, we’ve got to make an investment in our future,” and that’s in regards to some other business that that person wanted to emphasize. But the fact is, if we’re looking for everlasting results, if we’re looking for an investment in our future for the town, you refuse to talk about making a development for 55 and over up at Keisha Farm. You totally ignore that issue. And that issue, and if you go back to your spreadsheet, this one here, if you go down near the bottom, you’re going to put in for economic development funding of $1,100,000. You’re going to take it out of the COVID money and fund economic development. What I have suggested, making a 55 and over community up there at Keisha Farm, you not only would, you would get, once it’s all built out, with the taxes that you would collect every year, you would get at least $1,000,000, and you would start growing as the years go on. You also would, if you prime the deal correctly, with bringing in a qualified developer who’s going to only build the houses and sell the houses, and the town is a partner with them, and the land sale is, it conveys by lots, not by the entire property, but by lots as they’re sold, they’re built, the new guy comes in, who ordered that house, is now going to take ownership. We then take a profit out of it. Not only that, we would also be able to use our own engineering people to lay the schematic out for that. And you could charge a little bit of money against the COVID money for that as well. We could use, with all the dump trucks and all the equipment that we have, they could put in the sewer lines, the electric, all the underground utilities that are needed for this property, which a little bit of that money could come from COVID to pay for. And then, of course, in the end, we would have the big payoff. When the homes are sold, we get our payoff. Every year thereafter, all the taxes coming in, and it would be a million dollars a year plus. And you people totally ignore it. And I just don’t understand it, but Mr. O’Connor, he keeps insisting on his stadium, and there is no schematics to show what it’s going to look like. There is absolutely nothing that he’s brought forward to show us what it’s going to look like. And all the parking and all the asphalt there that’s going to go on that property. And there’s no operating costs. There’s no any kind of cost. Just think, as Mr. O’Connor did a couple meetings ago, he made this kind of a sign, like a cover on top of this building that he’s proposing. That has to be heated. That has to be air-conditioned. There’s all kinds of costs involved in that, and the people that would have to take care of it. Where is that going to come from?
Mr. Young?
The idea that I’ve suggested, Mayor, which you totally ignore, is make a development out of it, and you could save and make taxes forever, forever. They call it perpetuity. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Hearing none. We’ll move down to council reports from boards and commissions. Anybody? Councilman Hill.
Thanks, Mayor. A couple of updates. The Library Board had a Finance Committee meeting as well as a general Library Board Committee meeting earlier, I’m sorry, late last week. In terms of the financials, one thing I want to bring to the council’s attention is that you may be familiar that they have a benefactor in the past that had bequeathed to the library their home, and the home sold for around $300,000 in what the, let’s see, Jane Showman Fund. And the library has, in the past, taken some of the principal and has been able to kind of offset and add to some of the programs and services that they do offer, which obviously helps our budget. But with the way that the stock market has been going the past quarter or so, that has decreased significantly, so they will, they’re unlikely to be making any type of withdrawal from that account for this upcoming year. So I just wanted you to be aware of that. I’m sure the town manager will also update us on some of the infrastructure issues the library has been having this past week, so I won’t step on your toes there. But another thing in regards to Brainerd, though the Brainerd Voice Committee did not meet this week, we’ve all seen a number of emails from some folks that are on that committee in regards to the easement that we approved last month. Some of the folks did want to kind of go through with the public hearing with Deep on that, on the plan that they have, the Airport Authority has, in terms of cutting some of the trees in the cove. If someone wants to petition Deep for another public hearing, they may do so. All you need is 25 signatures, and then Deep, the Deep Commissioner, then has to see if it’s in the best public interest to see if we go, if she does want to go forward to another hearing. And I want to thank the town manager for bringing that to our attention. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody else? Councilman Lesser?
Thank you, Mayor. I have two. First, the Parks and Rec Board had a special meeting last week with the town manager, and we reviewed the conditions of the fields. There’s a revised document in our packet tonight, revised September of 2022, just revised in terms of the assessment by the Parks Board and Kathy Bagley of what the field’s needs are. So that was a productive meeting to review some of that with our town manager. And secondly, we met last week as a career advisory board, and you may remember, this is a board that was created to link our business community here in Weathersfield with our students for job shadows, internships, and we are planning the career fair. So as we get a little closer to that, Mayor, you remember, you participate and appreciate it, be asking people in the community as well as anybody up here that wants to be participants in either an internship, having an intern, a job shadow, or participating in the career fair in the spring, where we had over 60 different local careers talk to our students. I’ll update you on that every couple months, as it’s a nice initiative between our business community and our students. That’s it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Hearing, oh, Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Yes, the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee met on September 15. They’re going to have another shredding event on October 22 from 10 to 1. And coupled with that, it’s going to be a food drive for the Weathersfield Food Bank. There’s no cost for the shredding, obviously, and if you choose to make a donation of a food item or a monetary donation, that would be great also. Also want to mention, there’s been several openings on that committee for quite a while. If anybody knows anybody that might be interested, if they could have them contact us. They only meet once a month, Thursday of every month, and it’s a 3:00 meeting. It doesn’t usually run very long, so it’d be great if we could get those empty positions filled. And also, we had our first meeting of the Resilience Committee with Councilor Forrest and Town Manager Presley. That was held on the 28th. We’re going to meet twice a month for the near future, share ideas, and try to come to some conclusions, and with the focus on easing the burden on property tax, property tax burden. At this point, everything we’ve discussed is very long-range, so these are not solutions that are going to have an immediate effect on property taxes. If we’re successful, you know, this may be, you know, next-generation type thing. I think all of us will be long gone when some of this stuff really kicks in, but, you know, I’m open to suggestions, and I think we’re off to a good start. That’s all I had. Thank you.
Councilman Biggs?
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quick for the Veterans Commission, our next meeting is going to be October 12. On that day, the local scout troop, 85, is going to be making a presentation about upcoming fundraiser, as well as the Board of Education. We’ll be presenting plans as how the schools are going to celebrate Veterans Day. We’re just a little bit over from a month out, so we are full-pledge planning for that, so just stand by for more information on the plans for Veterans Day. If there are any volunteers as far as veterans or those supporting veterans, we will take all the volunteers possible to help us with the planning. Thank you. That’s all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. I guess, has there been a location chosen yet?
We are proposing to go back to the high school, but we are trying to work with the school to kind of see which location is more feasible comparative to the last few years of how we’ve done it. So we don’t have it locked in 100%. I think on the 12th, that’s when we’ll pretty much have a secure answer.
Okay. Thank you. Any other? Councilman Forrest?
Thank you. Just to give the council a further update as to what Deputy Mayor talked about, the resiliency or the big idea committee, we likely, next meeting, will probably be having an RFP put before us related to energy and how we can start to transform long-range energy costs. The second thing we’re looking into is an endowment model for the town and whether or not that’s even feasible. It might be fashioned after something like Yale or Trinity and how they pay for many of their operating costs in the long term. The third item that we were looking into was waste disposal or trash, and is there a better way to augment the large amount of money that it takes for us to get rid of our trash, and are we doing it in the best way? The fourth idea, which we’re, so those are three ideas that we’re looking into currently. We also have some parking lot ideas that we want to encourage other councilors or people in the public who have other large ideas that would transform our town. Another idea we were talking about was possibly looking at a way to construct our roads in a more efficient manner, but that is a parking lot issue, which we’re not going to take up right away later on. And those are the four major things that we’re tackling at the moment, but you’ll see, I think, a trickle in the next few months of concepts come before this council. But I want to make everyone just sort of aware of what we’re working on, so as we start these conversations, no one is taken by surprise like, “Oh, you’re working on that kind of thing.” Thank you very much for the time.
Okay. Anybody else on reports from boards or commissions? Seeing none, we’ll move down. Council comments on any matters before us at all. Councilman Lesser?
Thank you, Mayor. I have two community events I want to report on. One was the Salute to Business Dinner that happened between the last meeting and this meeting. It was put on by the Economic Development and Improvement Commission at the River. It was very well-attended. One of our former colleagues, the deputy mayor, Tony Martino, got the Distinguished Betty Rosanna Award. Mayor, maybe you can help me. I don’t remember all of the longevity winners that we had. There were four of them, but we --
Kelstrom.
Kelstrom, Village Pizza.
Village Pizza. The Grindr.
Weathersfield Pizza House.
Chickens.
Weathersfield Pizza House. And there was --
Village Pizza. Yeah, we got Village, and then --
One more?
Another pizza looking at?
We had two pizzas. Well --
Yep.
I apologize for not remembering the last one, but it was a great event. And lastly, I’ll mention that on Friday night, September 30, I attended the police chief, excuse me, sorry, chief, the fire chief’s retirement dinner. Chief, apologize, apologize. When you get as old as I am, maybe you forget a little bit, but the fire chief’s retirement dinner this past Friday, September 30, there were 250 people there, and I made the joke there, and I’ll make it again. When I retire, I’ll be lucky if I have four people. That’s my wife and my three daughters, and I don’t think they would actually come. So 250 people, real nice honor for Chief Bailey and well-deserved honor, and a nice evening to celebrate his time as our fire chief. Thank you. That’s it, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Biggs?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to put out to councilors and the community that there is a community fair coming up, November 3. It’s being put on by the WPS affinity group, the Black Indigenous and People of Color group. They’re welcoming families to meet and greet one another. It will be held at the Community Center from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. with a few guest speakers that we know locally. One might be myself, and one might be a certain police chief. But if you have the time and capacity, November 3, 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., Pickin Community Center, it’ll be a nice community fair going on. That’s all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I’d just like to take a moment to address a concern voiced by a resident regarding my comments at the September 6 council meeting related to the possible school closure and elimination of Charles Wright District. My intent was to advocate on behalf of the Charles Wright community. If my comments offended anyone, I apologize for that. It was certainly not my intent. I lived in the Charles Wright District for 21 years, and my two adult children attended school there. We experienced firsthand the leaking skylights, which took over 20 years to correct, and the overall lack of attention to the school and to the district. It always seemed like Charles Wright is last on the list for everything, almost as if they don’t matter. Again, these are my opinions. Many months ago, council members requested a tour of the five elementary schools to get a firsthand look at what we were dealing with. The group toured Hinner, I always have a problem pronouncing that, Hinmer, Emerson Williams, Highcrest, and Webb. The principals of each school greeted us. At Highcrest, our group was met by a dozen Highcrest parents who followed the tour and pointed out all the shortcomings with their school. After we finished the first four schools, Superintendent Emmett then asked the group if anyone needed to view Charles Wright. For probably a host of legitimate reasons, only Superintendent Emmett and I traveled to the Charles Wright School, and we were greeted by the custodian. I suspect, I don’t have any proof, I suspect neither the Charles Wright principal or the PTA were informed of the tour. Like I said, Charles Wright always seems to be an afterthought. The point that I was trying to make with my comments on September 6 is that other schools, most notably Highcrest, have a well-coordinated lobbying voice, at least as I see it, at the town council level. In the past three years I have been on council, I’ve received numerous emails from Highcrest parents calling for a new school. These same parents, and sometimes with their students, have come to council meetings and voiced their support of a new school. In contrast, I rarely, if ever, hear from a Charles Wright parent in support of or in opposition to the school reconstruction plan. Towards the end of my comments, Councilor Biggs interjected that Charles Wright parents are very organized, and I was going to be very surprised. I’m glad to hear that, and I hope they join me in voting this referendum down on November 8, which, by the way, is just over five weeks away. So again, my intent was not to offend, but to advocate on behalf of the Charles Wright community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilwoman Carbone?
Thank you, Mayor. So I usually like to start with a joke, and I feel like it’s Keisha, Keisha, Keisha. Why is it always about Keisha? And I don’t mean to mention it again. However, I didn’t find the article in Weathersfield Life very funny. It actually upset me a little bit, and I wanted to make public comment about it to correct a few things. As I was reading this article, actually, the one thing I did agree with was that the town council, of course, this is an air quote, it is a quote, “will determine how it will be utilized.” We have not determined, as far as I’m aware, how this property will be utilized. We’re still awaiting another study, which, as far as I’m aware, won’t be around for a couple weeks. Correct. So to have this article come out was a little upsetting, because they also named the structure as it being listed on the State Register of Historic Buildings. Again, is it listed on the Historic Register? No, it’s not. So there’s a lot of misinformation in this article. So, there's a lot of misinformation in this article to put forth an agenda that we haven't even created yet. And then for them to solicit funds on behalf of Keisha Farms, what are those funds being used for? Where are they going to go? We don't know because we haven't decided what's going to happen with that property. Do we need to do that? Absolutely. That needs to come very soon. We all need to get on some kind of page and figure out what we're doing with that property and get it going. I think for the town, for our budget, for everything, for the ARPA, we need to get off the pot. So, having said that, I just wanted to let everyone know that that misinformation, it's everywhere, obviously, and I just wanted people to be aware of these little things that upset me and made me crazy. I had nowhere else to address them. Also, the local farmer that is farming on the property, I know that, you know, the friends of Keisha Farms, and they're lovely people. I'm not saying anything negative about these passionate, concerned residents who really want to do something lovely with this property, and I completely get that. So, I'm not, you know, saying anything bad about them and their efforts. I think it's great, but I think we need to put a pin in it until we can decide as a council and a community what's to be done. And getting back to the cornfield, just because somebody is continuing to grow corn there doesn't make it perfect for organic farming. And I'm going to leave it at that and I'm going to yield on that. That was my little council comment.
Just to follow up on that, if Mr. Town Manager, you could look into, is there a contract with the farmer to utilize that property, store his equipment there? And, you know, if, if there is a contract, great. If there's not, you know, is there any liability to the town?
I just had that question, I posed that to Kathy Bagley earlier today. What she told me was that a, she said, a previous town manager, when, when the property was purchased by the town, that farmer was farming it at that time, and he had asked if he could just continue to do that until such time as the town decided what they wanted to do with the property, and he was told that he could. I don't believe there's a contract. I don't believe there's any agreement, so we are looking at what we need to do and what liabilities lie with that current arrangement, and we'll bring that back to you at that time.
And if I may say one more thing, I actually walked the property yesterday, which is the first time. I live right by there and had never been on it, and I know it's private, but I went on it.
It's not private.
It's not private.
It says no trespassing, nothing.
It's posted, no trespassing.
Yeah, right, but it's, yeah, until we rectify some of the, some of the hazards that may be there.
Yep.
It is hazardous. I'm not going to lie. So, I almost would suggest a structural safety study based on after this property because, I mean, obviously, I think most of us have been there now, right? This is not safe in the least. I mean, the first thing is the glass in the ground, and I thought, wow, they're having people here. The building is very structurally unsound in what everyone's calling a greenhouse. I would use that term very, very loosely. I don't find that that's safe. So, the amount of money that you would have to dump just to get the farm, I mean, unless people want to put a fence around it and not let anybody in it, which I highly doubt that is the case. So, before we start looking at, you know, if we want to make this a historic building, a historic landmark, it's, it's not going to be about putting a little sign on it. That's, that's not going to happen. So, again, I just want to, it's an event session, sorry.
Just to follow up on a couple of things Councilman Lesser had said, the salute to business was great. How could I forget Neil Walsh? Our holiday spending at Neil Walsh, and my wife and daughter...
Thank you, Mayor.
Have me going there. So, yeah, the four businesses were Village Pizza, Weathersfield Pizza, Neil Walsh and Kelstrom, all on longevity, and Kelstrom, actually, for eighty years, has been there. So...
Thank you.
God bless all those hard-working folks that have, you know, done so much for the town of Weathersfield, being here. The chief of, Chief Bailey's retirement, that was a great event. I can't believe thirty-five years of service to the town, and, you know, he was the first, first chief that I, you know, served on the council with, and he's always answered the call. If we needed him for any kind of questions to be answered here at the council, he would do that as well, you know? If there was something going on in town, both physical service and Weathersfield fire-related, he was always quick to answer those. So, wish him best in his retirement. Hopefully, he doesn't go anywhere soon. We do need him at physical services as well. And then finally, I was on a call the other day with the DOT. Actually, Gloria Zach sat in, our Economic Development Officer, for, for that meeting. There is a plan in the works by DOT with some of those infrastructure funds to extend where the on-ramp of ninety-one and eighty-four meet, just north of Hartford, kind of by the Dunkin' Donuts ballpark. And if anybody remembered or drives it, they drive under the tunnel and then you've got to go every which way to, to figure out. There is a plan to alleviate some of that stress. They're doing a community outreach, and they reached out to Weathersfield on that, and I think it's a pretty good idea. I just wanted to broach it with you guys. Alleviating traffic congestion on ninety-one North, ninety-one South would definitely impact, you know, traffic on the Silstein Highway, as well as the Berlin Turnpike for those that are trying to get around it. But more importantly, for our residents who are commuters to Hartford, sitting in that traffic, either coming out of Hartford or going into Hartford in the morning, it would alleviate some of those. So, they, they broached the idea to us. They are looking for a letter of support from the council for that. I asked them to draft something up. They've worked with the City of Hartford, City of West Hartford and East Hartford already, so they should be able to get us a sample letter. I'll circulate it through our town manager to you all, but I just want to give you a kind of, an update on that. It is those infrastructure funds from the federal government that are being spent directly on improvements, and in that situation, it's the I-84, I-91 connection that many Weathersfield residents use. That's about it for me. Mr. Town Manager, comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Just real briefly, for those of you that don't know, we did have a major water line break in this building, under this building, actually, a sixty-year-old water line that did burst, it caused flooding in the lower level of the library and in the boiler room. Fortunately, physical services staff caught it quickly before it got to the boilers, so that was good news. And I want to thank the physical services staff. Rich Bailey was one of the first ones on scene on Friday, but then the fire department came over. They were running six pumps at one time to make sure it didn't get to the boilers while they shut off the water. But long and short of it, they, they patched, they had to dig down five and a half feet under the building breakthrough and to access that water line. They were able to, to patch it, but it's, it's an old cast iron pipe, and once they start to go, they tend to go, and so the, even though that section was fixed, it broke further down shortly thereafter the next morning, and a call at five-thirty in the morning that it happened again. So, we are replacing that line right now, so there is no water to this building at this time. That's why you probably saw the bathroom signs. There are portlets out this side door over here for anybody that needs it for the time being. I want to, once again, thank staff for their patience in dealing with this as we've been, continue to be operational throughout this, and those staff members that need special accommodations have been allowed to telework, but for the most part, everybody's been here working through it. We're hopeful that in the next day or so, it's going to be resolved. They do have to run a completely new line. That's in process. They made a lot of progress today, but just for the next day or so, we will not have public facilities available with the exception of the portlets that are outside. So, just be patient and we'll get to it as soon as we can, but that's all I have, Mayor.
Now, is that a cost borne by the town or is that an MDC cost?
It would be borne by the town because it's all inside the building. It's our water line, although I will say, I'll also extend gratitude to MDC because they have been fantastic helping us trace the issues, mitigate some of the issues. They've been on-site almost the entire time, helping us through this. So, I think a lot of, has to do with a lot of MDC folks live here in town, so able to muster support, and they actually camered the line for us and said, "No, you don't want to go anymore on that line. You want to put a new line in." So, they've been advising us on that, but no, it will be a cost that we will have to bear, and depending on the final amount, we'll determine if it's a, something we'll go to current before on insurance, or if we're just going to have to deal with it ourselves if it's under the deductible.
Okay. Thank you. Sue, Town Clerk?
We are getting our absentee ballots ready. That's the biggest thing we're doing right now. We have had a hundred-and-forty-eight requests so far that we have all ready to go. All we have to do is put in the ballots and the explanatory text. We're just waiting for that, and otherwise, we're just waiting to see how many we're going to get. Anything we get in the office by Friday has to go out Friday, and I know there's a big push by many different organizations that have sent out or are sending out over seventy-five-hundred applications throughout the town to the residents. So, we're just, we just don't know when we're going to get the applications and how many we're going to get, so, but we're ready.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on, moving on to council action. Item B, one, I don't believe on our agenda there are any resignations or appointments to boards and commissions. However, I will put that plug in that I usually do. As Deputy Mayor had said on the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, there are a number of vacancies, and I do appreciate the Town Clerk's effort to put a sheet on the top of that list of appointments that have our current vacancies on there. If the public is interested in being any member of a volunteer board or commission, please take a look at that. If any of them excite you, please reach out. We would love to have appointments to fill some of those vacancies. Item B, two, A, this is the approval of an ordinance and a resolution. This is the restricted streets in the Meadows area. This had been proposed to us at the last meeting. We saw the, in your agenda packet, the reworked ordinance that would need to be addressed. I can tell you, this has been brought to my attention on a number of occasions prior to being mayor and more after being mayor. This is the access to the Meadows. I know we have the Chief of Police, the Captain of the Police and Lieutenant here that could probably address some of the concerns that have been brought forth by property owners down there over the years, but the town of Weathersfield does have, and I don't know if I'm stealing any of your thunder, Mr. Presley, I will yield to you at any time, but the town of Weathersfield does have some roads, I believe, three total, First Street, Second Street and Great Meadow that go through there. The ordinance currently, as it's written, says that those streets shall be open from dawn until dusk. Not many times in the past couple of years have I heard that they've been opened at dawn or closed at dusk or closed, and people have not had a chance to get out of that area before the gates had been closed. More importantly, a lot of the property owners that obviously have property down there, be it a farmer, nonprofit groups, have had damage done to their property as well. There has been some vandalism and illegal dumping that has occurred down there. Probably, if we needed to ask Sally Katz to run a report on manpower and use of town equipment to clean some of those properties, either the private properties, but more importantly, the roads that have been used as dumping grounds over the years, I could imagine we have expended a lot of staff time cleaning up that property and then disposing of any disposed items that have been left on the roads. With that said, I'll turn it over to Mr. Town Manager to fill in any of the gaps and also maybe some of the new language that you had included after conversations with council.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so, as the Mayor mentioned, this is something, we did meet with stakeholder group of all the property owners out there. All of them were unanimous and was moving forward with this type of proposal. And again, as was stated, Rocky Hill already has adopted similar language for their roads within the Meadows, and their gates are locked and closed at the other end. So, if anybody travels through from Weathersfield, gets to Rocky Hill, the gates are going to be locked and closed, they're going to have to turn around and come back through. So, based upon that and some of the things that we heard, what we're trying to do here is provide the keys to the property owners out there and the people that they designate. So, as an example, the, the game club can provide keys to their members, but they have to provide us with the list of those that have keys. We also have language in here that says that for anyone that is not a property owner, but that presents a strong rationale as to why they should be granted keys for access other than by foot or by bike, that, that could be considered, and I, I can have the authority to issue them keys. So, that's something that I think would get to some of the issues of, the comments that came up about those that could not physically walk in to enjoy the views out there could be provided with the key with certain terms to understand the conflicts that are out there with particularly the farm equipment. When we were out there on the tour, the Mayor and the Deputy Mayor and I, we had to move off the road several times because large farm equipment was coming down, and those roads are not made for heavy traffic. They're dirt roads, they're narrow, and as the Mayor stated, there's been a lot of issues with not just vandalism, but people, particularly when it snows, getting off the road, not realizing they're in the middle of a field, getting stuck, doing quite a bit of damage to the fields. And so, those are things we're trying to prevent with this ordinance.
Any questions, comments? Councilman O'Connor?
Yes, thank you. First, I have no problem with supporting this, but I do want to add one clause to it if this is possible. Because the town owns this road and we are basically giving it away to the property owners there, I think it's only fair that they be responsible for the maintenance on the road. You know, people walking or riding a bicycle aren't going to do the same type of damage to that road as these trucks and all of that, and since no resident of Weathersfield is going to be able to drive on that road unless they're part of the game club or part of, you know, the farming, I don't think it's fair to the town to give up something and then have to maintain that when we don't even get to really use it. And so, I, I think it's a fair request, and I walk that field all the time, and it's a beautiful trail. I ride my bike on it almost every week, but there are a lot of divots. There are a lot of holes, and they're being caused by the landowners that are there now, not by anyone on the town, and so as a result, they should be responsible, and the town should probably go in once a year and do a safety check since technically, I believe, we're liable because it's our road.
Valid point.
I mean, I would just suggest that it, we would, they wouldn't be the only users. I agree with you that their equipment would cause the, the bulk of the, of the issues, but maybe some kind of a cost-sharing proposal might be in order because we would still access it. Physical services would still go through. We would still have residents using it on a regular basis, which would be, you know, our liability. So, but maybe there's something we can work out where it would be a shared use, where they would take the bulk of it because of the impact, and we can look at it, but that's my only comment.
Councilman Forrest, you had your hand up earlier.
Going along with a little bit of what Councilor O'Connor talked about, do we regularly maintain? I like Councilor O'Connor, I'm down there all the time. My office is down there. I go for walks and jogs down there. Do we regularly maintain those roads? Meaning, do we level them out, grade them and plow that, or plow them? Like what, do we provide general maintenance for these roads?
We do provide general maintenance on those roads.
So, if we're proposing this particular ordinance, essentially, the town is, is paying for the upkeep of these roads, which is limited to a very few amount of our residents. Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes.
And then further, and I note here that it says that a person may get a key in order to use this public road if they have good cause, but then you talked about another sort of standard in your explanation, and I don't know if you were just saying that because you were, you know, just talking.
An example.
Yeah, but you said a very good reason, I think. It was something, something along those lines.
Strong rationale.
Strong rationale, thank you. I'm concerned that if we're, on a public road, that... I'm concerned that if we're, on a public road, that we now, someone of, whether it's the town or even not in the town, has to give a strong rationale in order to use their road, or use a public road. And what would be a not-strong rationale? Like, I don't give anyone a rationale to drive down Salsiene Highway or Somerset Street or any other road in this town. I certainly can understand limiting access for various purposes. I think about it just in our public lands. I was out west with my family, and there, you know, if there's too many people in an area, you're destroying environment, right? There's a, there's a reason for that. I certainly understand the issues related to dumping and vandalism. But, on the same breath, I think about the vandalism and the dumping that happens not in the Meadows. And we don't turn off our roads because it's happening in those locations. We would ask for more police enforcement, we would tackle those issues whilst keeping the public land and public roads available to us for public use. So, I'm a little concerned about, maybe more than a little concerned about the language about having good cause. I certainly understand and could go along with, and you and I have had this conversation before, Mr. Town Manager, some type of application in order to get the key and understanding who's down there, not even necessarily for what purpose, it could be for fishing, right, down there? Or, or just to go for a nice drive on a, on a Tuesday morning? But, that being said, I don't know if somebody should have cause, but I certainly understand that you may want to provide an understanding about who has access and who is down there, and ability to weigh the balance between the two, securing the area, but still giving public access. And I'm not sure that this ordinance, or I don't think at this time this ordinance provide, and I'll use an educational term, a least restrictive environment in order to match the use case and the protection of the use in what the language is on this particular ordinance, having good cause. I might change the ordinance to a pot, and I took some notes, I don't think we're gonna change it right here because I think lawyers will take a look at it, and it's throughout. Upon application, persons may operate motorized vehicles down at the road. So, you'd have to come here, you'd have to fill an application, and say, probably give a license plate of the car that's down there, you know, your name, maybe, or whatever it is, if you're gonna use a motorized vehicle down there, and then you get a key. And you get access to the public road, but know that, yeah, it is marked off, not everyone's just gonna come down there and just start doing wheel, you know, donuts in the middle of grass fields and damage all that property. Although, I'll note that that is private land for farmers, and along each of those sides, what are there? There's posts and metal rope, right, metal rails and ropes, so that people don't do that. Because there is, and, because there's an understanding, it's a public road, and then if we don't want to have people vandalize, that there is certain precautions that can be taken certainly by farmers. But, because of the having good cause and how to enforce that in that it's a public road, I'm just not feeling the least restrictive balance, but still understand that something like this is certainly, could certainly be on the table with those discussion points that I had before. On a really sort of technical note, but serious note, because we are passing a law here, I note that in the areas that are bound by this restriction under 157-2A, one, Great Meadows Road, east and south of the center line of the Putnam Memorial Bridge. If we wanna create a revenue stream, everybody that comes off of I-91 exit at the end just hand them $250 ticket. But, that is south of the center line. So, that you're including the exit ramp for I-91 north unto the Great Meadows Road, which would be, everybody would be in violation that came off of there. And then also, we're building the bike path that attaches to the bridge, of course, we would just allocate that fund, and that would also be south of the center line. So, there might be some tech, the gate is further down, but it's not the center line of the bridge. So, there probably would be some, have to be some technical additions unless you're indeed in thinking about that, but I'm sure that we weren't. It would have to be at the gate. So, I think there's some technical changes that have to be made here to really match what the goal of the area is. So, I would recommend, I'm sure there'll be more thought, questions and comments, but that we would probably at some point table this to make some adjustments, and if other people think that maybe we don't have the right balance between public use and least restricted application of this particular ordinance to fulfill the reasonable requests of the farmers and the people that are down there, but still balance that with the public use. Look forward to maybe pausing this until the next meeting, we can get some language which matches.
Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Thanks, Matt. Excellent presentation on what I had jotted down here, so.
Could've said it on the floor.
Your lawyer background is better than mine, so appreciate that. I did have a number of items that I also wanted to address, and I don't know that they needed to be put into the language, but these were items that were discussed previously, that I'd like to have some kind of commitment from the town that these will get put in place. I had jotted down signage. I'd like to see appropriate signage explaining these rules, much the same as the Rocky Hill entranceway was marked out. A defined parking plan for the people that are gonna drive their cars to, up to the gate and then walk the rest of the way, because those areas are very constricted and farm equipment has trouble getting by if people park in the wrong places. Proper pedestrian access points. Those, those gates, in my opinion, look like somebody's sneaking around through the brush to get into the, you know, get past the gate, and that just doesn't, you know, speak to, I think we're talking about having eventually a walking trail, Heritage Trail, sorry, can't think of the name, but, you know, it needs to be cleaned up and made proper, you know, set up so that, you know, snowmobiles and motorcycles can't get through, but pedestrians can easily gain access. We also talked about cameras on the gates, so that when someone does dump trash in there, in front of the gates, we have a better chance of finding out who did that, the damage. And lastly, I had jotted down, these rules for access should apply to the landowners as well. When we were down there, one of the gates was open because the farmer or whoever, whatever operation it was during their normal workday, and they, they wanted to keep the gate open so they could come and go as they pleased. Well, if the public can't come and go as they please, I think they need to get off the tractor and lock the gate behind them, so that they're following the same set of rules. And then, just to reiterate what Matt said, I, I think it's very important that the public wants to enjoy the nature down there, they have the right to do so, and they don't have this insurmountable criteria to meet to, to get a key. And, you know, a straightforward application, if a person wants to take their kayak and launch it from there, I think they ought to be able to drive their car down there and do so, and, and not, you know, get turned down for the application of a key. That's all I had. Thanks.
Any other comments? Councilwoman Carbone.
Thank you. I think everyone's made some really excellent points, and thank you, I do have pages, well, I don't have paper yet, I was telling at my house, I'm using stickies, and I have a bunch of notes. I completely agree with you, Matt, that this is not the least restrictive for what we're trying to accomplish. Is this designated, it's not designated a park, correct? It is a private road adjacent to privately, I mean, public road, excuse me, adjacent to privately-owned property. So, so can be said for all of our neighborhoods. So, my street is a, I live on this little cul-de-sac now, and it's public, but if I felt people were abusing it, does that give me and my two neighbors to say, you know, we really don't want any unauthorized vehicles down our street? My only concern is setting that kind of precedent, really. Say, okay, you know, you can't come down here. Because really, that's what we're saying. But, I do understand wanting to enjoy it and preserve it, and I understand that, so I agree, we have to kind of find some balance between the two. So, are you saying that you're wheelchair-bound, you wanna take a ride down there, that person will get a key? So, maybe a sticker or something like that on their car that gives them access? But, who's going to be monitoring that? Just because they get in with the key means?
Again, it's just, it, it would, not necessarily that situation, but if it's a valid, you know, reasoning, you know, someone fishes and has a lot of equipment, and they don't wanna have to lug it in from their car, it could be a valid reason. And they, the place that they fish there on the river that they can have access to that's not private property, that could be a valid reason. But, but I'm fine with the suggestion that Councilman Forrest made about making it, you know, less restrictive, that's, I don't have any issue with that. And as far as, you know, policing it, if you issued a key, I would assume the application would also have your understanding of the terms of what you're responsible to do, shutting it behind you, not leaving trash, all those types of things. If there are cameras at the gates and things like that, we know who goes in, who goes out, and if it's monitored periodically, we could probably pretty much narrow down who might be responsible for something that took place on the inside, but.
So, the other day, when I went down there, there was a turkey shoot going on, and there was probably about 30 cars down there. I really didn't see, I did see a farmer, I got the look, I turned around, it was right at the Weathersfield, excuse me, Rocky Hill line. So, for those instances, what would be your fix for that? So, if you have one key, the, those 30 people wouldn't receive?
Actually, they probably would because they're Game Club members. So, so what estates in here, as property owners, can, can provide a list of designated key holders, so the Game Club, you know, the farmer can supply them to their workers that are out there on a regular basis, those types of things. But, they'd have to submit and say, this is our list of people, if it changes, they have to let us know. We have to have the information for everybody that physically has a key.
I just feel like that's a lot of keys.
It's a lot of keys.
Yeah.
I mean, there are currently a lot of keys out there. That's, that's what the, the concern is. And then, you know, people, or it's open, and either somebody granted access in there and left it open, or the town didn't close it, and then that's when you start to see, you know.
Responsible for opening and shutting physical services?
Right now, it's not happening.
No, I don't.
Well, I guess technically, it would be Physical Services is in charge of opening it in the morning, and then the police, and I don't know if they do it now, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the police was supposed to do a perimeter or a survey of any cars that are in there, and then they lock it behind them. You know, when I first heard that was going on, I talked to the chief, previous chief, and, you know, that takes a number of hours, and patrol vehicles off the roads to, you know, drive through those streets just to ensure that nobody is in there.
Gets locked in, correct, yeah?
Nightly. And I don't know how many calls come in for, to dispatch to say that there is a car that's down there and I gotta get let out. Yeah, I, I agree with Councilman Forrest's idea on a least restrictive, and we did talk about how to manage the keys and applications that go in, the idea that, you know, maybe somebody, general public, you know, fills out the form, prescribes exactly what they are going to be doing down there, and, you know, their rationale for it. I don't think it's gonna be as restrictive as some folks think. You know, to the points that the Deputy Mayor had made, first with the cameras, when we were down there, the good thing about the Putnam Park, or Putnam Overpass rails to trail, or not, whatever, trailway over Putnam, there is parking down there that would be DOT property, and I think we'll have conversations with the DOT to maybe install cameras, not only for the parking lot, for any illegal activity that's going on in the parking lot, but maybe have one facing Great Meadow Road where the gate entrance is. So, if there is somebody who goes up to the gate and dumps debris there, that they would be on camera for that. And then the other entrance on Elm Street already has power out to that area, so maybe the town could look into the cameras there. Yeah, the defined parking plan as well, that, that is a great idea, because right now, cars just park along that line right there. But if, you know, we do have DOT parking access on Great Meadow Road, that maybe, you know, when the Heritage Trail is up and running, that they park there and then do their recreation from that point on. And then finally, I agree about access points. It does look like, and I know a couple folks have worked to make it a little bit clearer, that bikes and pedestrians can go around the gate. But, I think we'll probably have engineering and Physical Services come up with a, a better layout for both access points, Elm Street and Great Meadow, so that people looking to use it either as bike trail or walking trail can have easier, easier access. But again, limit it to that rather than snowmobiles and, you know, motorcycles and whatnot, and obviously vehicles, so. Councilman Pentlow?
I was just gonna make a, it looks like we're on consensus motion tables. I was gonna make a motion to table this ordinance until the next meeting, October 17th.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. So, you have a list of some things that we're gonna work on. Unfinished business, not only unfinished from the last meeting, but unfinished from our special meeting earlier tonight. This is the ARPA fund allocation, and I think that's just some documentation in our agenda packet, but we would have that list that was before us in the special meeting to go over. And if I heard, Councilman Forrest state, we do have some consentable items, but I don't know. Now hearing some concerns about the agenda management system.
And again, right now, this is just to budget and appropriate the funds that we can go out to bid for this stuff officially, and so you will get the contract back for approval for any of these that are over $35,000. So, you'll have the opportunity then to, so.
But I think you heard some council members' concerns with those, they were brought up by the public as well. Keep that in mind. Fire department evaluation, $40,000 class and compensation study for town employees, $50,000. Council strategic plan facilitator, $25,000. If I hear any opposition, I will take that off of consentable item for this.
I think you're good with that, and the other three we talked about.
The other three we discussed.
At a minimum.
That's, that's an item in here, isn't it?
Yeah, actually, you make a good point. That is further down in our bids.
Yeah, it's here, we can, we can take that off, you can pass on that, and we can bring it back. I'll make those changes, you can take this one off, but this is just to appropriate the funds. I'll go back to them, so we can have a conversation.
Okay. The other items, Councilman Forrest had mentioned, the Scott Air Packs, that's time-sensitive in the sense that we do have a grant for those. These would be funds of $146,000. Radio system upgrades, I had a question mark on those because what is in our packet that was presented to CIP, I believe? Totaled, geez, too many pieces of paper. Yeah, wasn't it?
There's two items, it was the shelter upgrades and then the network.
Oh, okay, wasn't the portable?
No, it was these two, because those are, these are upgrades that need to take place for existing equipment. I'm sure the Chief can tell you that we need replacement of the portables as well, but those are, these are the ones that we need, the system upgrades sooner rather than later.
Okay. So, we are good with any opposition, concerns, questions on the $100,000 and $35,000, for a total of $135,000 for, this would be both police and fire upgrades, radio system upgrades? upgrades?
We have consensus from our side on that.
Are you going down the whole list, Mayor?
Just the three that had been mentioned earlier. And then the other, the last one you guys had mentioned as consentable is the IT equipment upgrades for 100,000. Again, if you can explain that.
Sure. So what that covers are the, wasn't the total amount for the AV council upgrades, but in speaking with the IT staff, I said, what do we have to do to implement some of the new things we want to do on the agenda management side? So they pared that number down for me. Laptop computers for 5,000, security camera replacements in our buildings for 10,000, as well as the desktop and the Windows 10 upgrades.
Okay. And that's, again, priority?
Yes.
Any discussion on those from any members?
Just generally, we know how desperate the town is on the IT side. And I think we're just wrecking that. And one piece of that puzzle.
Yep.
Do we have, sorry, do we have a running total as far as what they've consented on? Like, right now?
That was this.
No, that's 3.5, but now this is in addition. So this 1.9, what is the actual 3.5 and then what's been consented on? I'm just curious what's actually gonna be left.
It's 146, 135, and 100.
Yeah. But these three for 115 out of the 153 on the strategic initiative, the other page. Everything but the agenda management system. In addition, the ones you just mentioned.
Yeah.
Well, actually, I think, are we gonna?
Yeah, it was already paid. This is just allocated.
Yeah, I thought that was already set aside.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that doesn't come out of the money that's left. We've already set aside 230. So it's just coming out of that 235.
Okay, okay.
It's like 370, 381.
381. Who's the math major? Ryan?
What do we propose we do?
Yep. So I, I mean, that's, so just to go back on this sheet that has the October 3rd work session, are we gonna keep the 38,000 in there? And we'll look at the?
I can go back. You don't have to vote on the bid. I can go back, have them give them the feedback, see if they can adjust the numbers per the comments. And then I'll come back and that number will probably drop. But, or we can wait, we can hold off on it.
Right. But we don't have to vote on that because it's already been allocated through the?
Well, it's been, I can't spend it, but it's been set aside. So no. But these others, I'd like to read it so we can RP in those. That would be nice.
Got it. Okay. Councilman O'Connor?
So if I'm doing my math right, we have 2.65 left of the ARPA funds, and there's a request here for almost 2 million of that based on this, what we're calling time sensitive items.
So you have an unamended balance coming into this meeting tonight of 4.2 million dollars. 4,204,698. That's that bottom number on this sheet here. Okay? So that's what you're working from. And thus far, you've talked about 381,000 coming out of that. So you're still gonna have?
3.8.
1.6 on the one, on the sheet of requested funds.
Sorry. I did it like three times.
Looks like 3.8-ish.
Yeah, 3.8237, roughly.
And then, so that's what we're starting at right now?
No, you're starting at 4.2 right now.
And where we're ending up with after?
If you agree with those three items, it's 3.8 you'll have left.
And it's the top three items on this?
It's the?
This one, this one.
It's 1, 2, it's number 1.
Radio systems, the equipment, and the IT.
The matching funds.
Matching funds, number 1.
3.83.
Yep. 146, 135, 100.
Correct.
Can we just go back to the 100? Because Shelley pointed out, this, these IT items add up to more than 100?
They do. That's why I said, I got them to call it down. And so they're gonna work within the budget that we give them because?
Just trying to confirm.
So all five of those line items being encompassed in that?
Yes. Correct.
Thank you.
He's right here.
We'll just cut to now and then.
So we're just voting to go ahead with these three, is that correct?
Well?
Or we're gonna keep going, go ahead.
I mean, if you guys want to have a discussion on the police HVAC, I think I heard it loud and clear.
What about the watch guard cameras? Because I think the captain came up and said that most of those were at the end of their life use.
Well, let me just go down.
Oh, okay.
The list.
You said police, so that was off the mind.
Police, HVAC. We've heard about that. This is the, the room right now where the IT equipment is housed, has a split, for lack of a better term, AC unit in there right now to cool that equipment down. You know, we've heard from Sally Katz, the need for that HVAC. I guess, you know, I don't know if the police want to talk about it, or if we want to discuss the HVAC. Do you think a priority?
Thank you, Mayor. I think this one, for one, is this connected to the room that we just had the issue on when Sally was here earlier? Is this HVC part of the generator situation that happened earlier?
No.
So there's no connection between the overheating and this HVAC?
No.
All right. So that's what I wanted to get clear for that. But we did hear from Sally before that right now, there's a smaller unit that's doing double the duties and is trying to cool down two different entities that it's not, doesn't have the capacity to do.
I believe that's correct, but if you?
So I think that this is one of the top items that we need to look into to approve. Because at the end of the day, if the HVAC unit is not doing its job, and we have IT stuff that's overheating or not being taken care of, staying at the cool temperature it's supposed to stay at, we're gonna run into further financial issues that are not gonna be liked on this council when it comes to our table again. So I think this is something very important to move on. I'm not sure if anybody else has background on it, Deputy Mayor.
I think the HVAC unit that they're talking about is for the entire building. The IT mini-split that they put in was a separate issue. I believe that was a small area that they upgraded all their servers and so forth, and it generated more heat. So they, you needed to cool that one particular area. The, I believe that what Sally was talking about was, this is for the entire building, which is 20 years old, and it's just not keeping up with the current demands that they have for general space. I may be wrong, but that's the story that I got.
Speak to that at all, Chief?
Good evening. That is, the HVAC system we have now is, it's just not suitable. We can't control the heat, we can't control the cooling. We have space heaters in the building right now. It's just worn its life out. And as it continues to wear out and gets patched, our systems are gonna go, as we can see. Just what happened the last couple of days. I would hate for catastrophic failure based on the HVAC system and the generator because, as we saw, power went down and our generator went out. And we had to plug that in to keep comms up. And we had to take dispatchers and move them to Rocky Hill to make sure we answered our calls the last couple of days. So I would behoove you to please do that. This is, you know, there's, there's wants and there's needs. 20-year-old building that we're trying to keep up and running through that system that's outdated, that can't support what we're doing. And as we add more equipment in there, it's gonna put a bigger strain on it. And if we rely on the generator that we have now, as we just saw, it's not viable, there one and the other. It is split for the IT room, but there's only so much you can do. It's outdated.
Okay. Consentable for HVAC. That's item number two on this list.
Matt had a question. I think as it relates, whether it's the eight, there's several HVAC units on here, and, and then the fields, is that if we, the council's amenable, as we've discussed, to moving forward with an energy review, along with what we're having basically is a field review, which we've already authorized, we have this, I think we're trying to be a little cautious here because those are two huge items that we can then weigh on how to allocate. So while I'm not even thinking about whether it's the generator or the HVACs, like taking it completely off, there's a, there's a, there's a global discussion here, just like there was in the fields, with a lot of this energy stuff that we can look at in a relatively quick time, get the reports back, and then attack these particular items in a way that's, I don't wanna say it's more, it's thoughtful, meaning that the way that we're talking about it now is not thoughtful, but could have more information and be, be a better plan. So although, you know, if there's a server room, I think that, you know, for not $200,000, you could get a standy air conditioner to keep the room cool while we work out on a global scale exactly how to attack this. 200,000's a lot of money. The 300, the, along with the?
Community center?
The generators, 352, the other ones, 475. These are huge numbers. And if we're considering doing anything with the fields, like this is gonna eat it all up pretty quickly. So I think getting those two big reports on our desk, so to speak, or recommendations, or at least understanding, allow, allow us to prioritize these particular items. This is not to say that they're not important. This is not to say that they're not even somewhat urgent. But if, with a little bit more information, I think it would allow us to say, okay, now let's start to prioritize. And you're gonna see a big, you know, us be able to make big moves for how we want to move forward. So I do think it's just a little bit too early today. But in the near future, I think we could do it.
Can I ask a question, please? So, Matt, you and Tom have been doing this committee, and you're looking at electrifying the town. How would that impact? So if the power goes out, how would that impact the generator? Do you know what I mean? Like, when you, if you guys are putting in new systems, is a generator that has obviously no energy going to it, right? How would that impact that? Wouldn't you still need a generator to, that either, what, gas fueled? Are these generators gas fueled? Are they fossil fueled? So how is that going to change if, if we, you know, going forward?
Sure. Well, the first, first thing is not, not necessarily, right? We could have a, we could have a utility scale battery backup, which means we don't have a generator at all. And then if we do have a generator, and we're gonna purchase a generator, are we purchasing the right generator in order to then dovetail into, let's say, feeding the battery backup or the other parts of our grid, or our microgrid? And we don't necessarily know exactly what those products are, and how to coordinate them and have them be compatible with each other. And we don't want to just get into the situation where, kind of like Hamner, where we had to get this boiler, it cost a half a million dollars, and now, you know, we may be getting a new Hamner. So we spent all this money, and then it's not necessarily compatible with whatever our, our future blueprint is. That's the concern, at least.
So would, obviously, based on, not on your, you just guys have just started this, but would the new system, the battery backup, would that be compatible with what they have now? Or would we need an entire new system? Would that be a whole nother cost you'd have to incur?
And that's what the, that's what the recommendations are going to tell us. But generally speaking, generally speaking, a battery backup is no different than a battery backup. It's still, electricity isn't different because it's created by solar or hydrocarbon. It's still electricity. There's no difference.
The battery backup's not gonna provide power to the police station if we're out of service for four days or five days. I'm sorry, but it's not gonna happen. So yeah, it'll handle short-term durations, but that's, you know, this, this system is set up where they can bring, start trucking in fuel to keep the thing running in a, in a bad situation.
It was, that was just an example of why we would want to just coordinate the, the process, right? Whether that is what goes in there, or another generator, or a portion of the two. But just to be able to coordinate that, and so we're not purchasing one item from the left and one item from the right, but then they don't talk to each other because there's not a unified system, et cetera, et cetera. That's, that's just the pause moment.
I mean, Matt, as much as I agree with your study, it, it does seem that these are pretty prevalent. I mean, when you have dispatchers in Rocky Hill, I think public safety trumps an electrification grid in the, the short term. We don't even know how quick the RFP is gonna turn around. And how quick is it gonna be till they complete the study? Then how, how, how quick can we turn around the implementations and the findings of the study? So, and then when, yeah, especially with winter coming. So that being said, I think this is definitely, as far as priorities go, I think that would probably be up there when you're talking about public safety.
You talking about HVAC or generator?
Generator.
So?
Yep. You had your hand up earlier.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just, I'm just looking at this. I feel like we're intertwining two things, although they're somewhat relatable. They're two separate things that we're intertwining that we should not be. I think the HVAC system is completely separate from the generator system because we already said that we're waiting on her electricians to give us an example of why it overheated. The HVAC system, as we kind of just talked about, although it's for the whole system, if one of those systems goes down, it is gonna pull from that system. I mean, if your upstairs is not cooling right, now you're down, now there's gonna be a, you know, cause and effect. So I think that the HVAC, to focus on that, not the generators, the HVAC is imperative. I mean, not only for equipment, but for personnel. They are wearing more gear than any of us wear on our daily basis. That's a heat situation. We don't want these, you know, gentlemen passing out, or anybody passing out because of overheat, because they're sitting in a hot building that doesn't get the proper AC or cooling. I think there's a fuller scale picture that we keep on intertwining, and it's not the same. Like HVAC right now is the focal point right now. I think that one item, not the generator, the HVAC item is something we need to approve.
Councilman O'Connor?
I, I agree with Councilor Biggs on that. I just have a question. Is if we approve the 1.9 million, going back to my earlier math question, that leaves 1.8 million available in COVID funds, correct? Roughly?
4.2 minus 1.9?
Yeah. Two?
It's really, it's really almost two.
Yeah. So I, I'll share my personal feeling on this is, I'm comfortable with addressing all of these time sensitive items. But in return, I would like to see us earmark that $2 million to be available for the results the town manager comes back with with regards to Keisha Farms, the fields, the trails, and the, whatever else happens to happen there. I'm, my fear is that as we go down these funds, we're gonna keep spending them, and spending, spending, there will be nothing left for something that should have been addressed six years ago. And I don't want to see another Cottone Field where it goes another 10 years before we actually do something with it. I think we have a unique opportunity, and we should act on it. I'd be very comfortable moving forward with all of these. I mean, to me, I would much rather see the PAL get moved up, and maybe the dump truck get moved down. Because I think the PAL actually has some, the potential of paying down the road when it becomes self-sufficient, and they do their own fundraising and everything. And this is to kickstart that program. I think that's something that benefits a lot of people. But I'd be curious if there's a consensus on earmarking that 2 million, or whatever that number comes out to be, towards the Keisha Farms study.
You want a straw poll? Do you have the tune on?
Sure.
No.
That's a surprise.
Well, you know, I?
Talk it out a little more.
Yeah, I think we gotta talk that out. A lot more. I agree with Councilman Biggs. I think the HVAC is priority. The generator, let's take a look at what the electrician says and see why that did fail. There are other concerns with that, though. You know, if it's drawing too much, and that's why the transfer switch melt, melted, that could be, you know, an internal problem we would have to look at. Dump truck with a plow, you know, we are down a dump truck. So I don't know what everybody's thoughts are with that versus the F-350. I don't know what the priority is between those two. I would like to see that the dump truck replace truck 14 with a plow, again, given winter is coming and leaf pickup is coming soon.
They won't, they won't get it for leaf in time for? They won't, they won't get it for a leaf, in time for a leaf pickup. They might get it in time for plowing, but it's not available. Sorry.
Just one question to that, and you two would probably know better than I am. With that, so with 14 down, was 14 the only one capable of doing what it can do? And these are, one of this is to replace 14? Is that why we're so pushing to replace 14? There's no other one that can do what 14 does?
Well, there, there's, we have dump trucks of this size and capability that only they can do that, and we're down, with 14 being down, we're minus one. So the leaf pickup, so something else is going to have to fill in to do that.
So then my.
Pickup or the plowing.
So then my follow-on question to that, as far as the staff that we have to do this, do we, are we replacing a vehicle that we don't have the staff to actually handle?
No, we have the staff.
We have the staff to do it.
We just don't have the vehicle right now.
I just want to make sure we're not putting up equipment, but we don't have the staff to actually use the equipment.
This was one that was on the road that is now off the road.
Tom?
I'm just going to share the operation that I understand it, as I understand it. There are X number of individuals that are in the road, what's called the road crew. I believe the number is eight. Don't hold me to that. I believe there's 12 trucks total. During high usage events like snow plowing primarily and leaf collection, all those trucks are utilized. Or that's the, that's the intent. They take drivers from other departments to plow snow, and I'm not sure exactly how they rotate the leaf pickup operation, but I believe four of the trucks, I know for a fact two, but at least four of the trucks are not used 24/7. They're almost like spares, except for those two emergency situations. And they also cover equipment when your truck's in for service or breakdowns, stuff like that. So the three oldest trucks that we've heard about, the two Sterling trucks, those are the oldest two. 14 was the next one. Those only put on three, 2,000 to 4,000 miles a year, where the other ones, you know, are used more continuously. So I believe, yes, we have to replace one truck. Sally's request was for three. She wanted to replace the three oldest trucks. And her primary reason was they are older than this 12-year number that, I don't know where it comes from. I've asked. It's a 12-year replacement schedule that no one can provide me any proof that it's a real number or if it works. So in, in that respect, I suggested we just replace the one. Where we're at. I think we need to replace one truck.
Thank you for that explanation.
If I heard the deputy mayor correctly, and I've sat next to him and in front of him over the years.
You agreed with something.
He's agreeing with the.
Well, I'm, I'm going to put a caveat in there. The two Sterling trucks that we continuously are told you can't get parts for, they have continued to run for at least four years since I was out there saying that. But magically, they find the parts, so.
Yeah.
You know.
If only we had that timestamp software. Everybody could go back to.
Okay.
Again, it's just not without the escalator.
Councilman O'Connor?
Yeah, and maybe I missed it because I only heard one person in the straw poll. And I just wanted to get confirmation that the deputy mayor is speaking for everybody up here, that nobody wants to earmark money towards Keisha Farms.
No, it was the straw poll. I said no. The other people can.
I know, so I'm asking.
Yeah, yeah.
I just want to make sure.
Okay.
Because I didn't hear anyone.
I think it's a lot of money to put towards one item, so.
Oh, he said Keisha Farms and Fields and other, you meant other fields and parks.
Yeah, that was going to be my question.
Yeah, I'm just looking for a straw poll. I'm curious.
A straw poll of.
Where, where do you, where do people stand on using this COVID funds for the fields regarding whether it's Keisha or wherever else the town manager comes back with? Or are you not willing, or are you not, I don't know if willing is a strong word, or you, is the, is the majority opinion here that we don't want to spend any money on, out of the COVID funds on these fields?
You can't say any money. You say $2 million. If it's, you want to allocate $2 million, you have to say.
I can say whatever I want.
Sorry.
I'm just. Yes.
I'm willing to spend some money to upgrade fields in town and look for the best place to do that. I don't know if I'm willing to spend $2 million. I want to wait for the study that's due February 15th. But if you're asking, would you be willing to set aside some funds for that? My answer is yes.
I mean, I'm right there with Ken. I think that was, I thought that was the consensus that once information came back, we would all be in, not all, but most of us would be in favor of some kind of allocation to look into fields and do that kind of stuff, yeah.
And, and, and just for clarity, the reason I'm asking that question is, as we go through this list, we're just spending and spending and spending. There may be nothing left to even do that. And that's what I think is really important and we know is, you know, I look at, is a dump truck more important than possibly a PAL program? Is a dump truck more important than, you know, taking advantage of what's at Keisha and maybe spending that money on a trail? I guarantee the people that were here in the last council meeting would all say, you know, toss the dump truck and build the trail.
I think that's, I'm just, I just think that's, that's literally why we're going item to item to figure out like why, or do we really need this? Why do we not need this as a want? Is it a need? I mean, I, I, I hear you, and then at the same time, I will say toss the dump truck. I mean, I'm already, you heard my question, so you probably guessed where I was going with the dump truck. But at the end of the day, out of our residents, when the winter time comes and their snow isn't off their street, we're going to have 20,000 calls about, hey, you guys are moving too slow. So I'm asking the questions just to get to the bottom of it before I make an actual decision on my, you know, how I feel. So I think that's why we're here asking those questions. We all know that we're trying to allocate funds for the Keisha Farm field thing that we've been talking about for years, but at the same time, we do have actual stuff that needs to get done that has been sitting on these lists for a long time.
And I will end with that is many things that should be budgeted for and not necessarily taken out of this fund.
We started the conversation earlier. We agree, we're, we're there. There's disagreement there.
Thank you.
Okay. On this item, on the dump truck item, Mr. Deputy Mayor?
If we don't have enough dump trucks, the solution is that they hire a contractor to come in and plow the roots at a, an exorbitant rate. So it's not like the roads won't get plowed. They're just going to cost a lot more money than if we were to do it ourselves.
And again, the request was for three of them. Is that correct?
Correct. There's some requests, yeah.
Three of them because the age was greater than 12 years.
I could support this. That's one person's view.
Okay. Dump truck? Straw poll, any opposition?
I think we should keep the cap space for, because we haven't received the big reports back to see how we're supposed, what the, how to prioritize the long list of items that people want, including, which we haven't talked about, was the money that we said we were going to allocate to the businesses that, you know, some of the nonprofit businesses. That is not even on this list. 100,000 for that?
It's on the bottom.
Yep, that is 100,000 nonprofit support.
Yeah, for consideration, but it wasn't part of the conversation. We just had 1.9 and the.
I'm trying to go down a list. I'm literally trying to go.
I tried to help you out, Mayor.
Dump truck.
I mean, if, if it's on, it's on. If it's off, it's off. But I'm not hearing any strong opposition for that.
Don't think it's, I don't think it's urgent that we get the dump truck right now.
Okay.
I'm going to follow your street.
Is that the consensus of everyone up here? Hold off on the dump truck? I mean, the rationale has been put forth that it's literally sitting idle. Not being utilized.
Except during leaf pickup and snow removal, which is when people are going to scream the most, but yeah, well, we can.
And if it snows in November?
Correct.
Right.
I'm in support.
I mean, we could, if it, if it, and it's interesting with the ARPA fund conversation, we can pay for this out of contingency if it's so urgent that it needs to be done right now. And when, and the truck's not going to, it's already at, you know, October. I, we talked about these during budget and nothing came and said, you have to get this right now.
Except for 14 died.
Yeah.
Post-budget and before we're sitting here tonight.
It was on the list, the replacement. Nine, 10, and 14.
Yep.
I wasn't here for the budget. What you're saying, from what I'm hearing, what you're saying is you have pushed aside certain things on the budget to pay for it through ARPA. And I think you kind of have to follow through with what your plan was and because I wasn't prepared to that and trusting that these things were supposed to be budgeted for, but, and now you're going to be negged because we don't want to spend it. That's kind of.
Well. I'm, I'm fine with the dump truck. As much as it pains me to agree with Tom, I'm absolutely fine with it.
Okay. I think folks, I think what I'm hearing.
Go with the dump truck.
Majority in favor of the dump truck. I got to say, the F-350, I don't know enough about that. I do recall in budget conversations with Sally and the department that that was needed, I guess, to replace one other. Mr. Deputy Mayor?
The request.
Who seems to live at the transfer station and down garage?
The request was for two pickup trucks, two F-350 pickup trucks, and I suggested that they put an F-350 dump truck with a plow that would be more versatile instead of somebody driving around all day in a pickup truck. That's how it came about.
Okay.
And I suggested one rather than two. I don't have any knowledge of the age of the replacement pickup trucks.
But this isn't urgent? Do you feel that this is an urgent need?
I can't comment.
Mr. Town Manager, anything from department staff on an urgency?
We don't have a downed vehicle in this case, so it's not as urgent as the dump truck.
Okay.
It's still, you know, we need to replace this equipment as time goes by, but it's not as urgent, I will say.
Hold off on the F-350?
Can't wait till Sally watches the video.
Um, we've heard a lot about the vent track that can be used in time for snow. We are down a Jeep. This would also be used on, the only apparatus used on the new elevated ramp to the bridge. That won't be used until obviously spring when it's growing, but in the meantime, if we get it in time for winter, we can use it to plow. It would replace the Jeep, and I'm just thinking, I have plow and Putnam Bridge together in my notes. I don't want us to use that to plow our portion of the walkway. That has been taken care of by the DOT, if I'm not mistaken. Correct?
You're right.
Have to plow the parking lot.
Nope.
The DOT too, I think.
Incorrect.
I believe so.
Good question, Matt.
We can, I can verify.
So urgency for this would be to take over for the one missing Jeep for plowing. It would take into consideration the deputy mayor's concerns of, and we've all seen it. We've all heard reports of ruts on those. It did drop from 75 to 57,000, so that is good. And we can use it to mow and supplement what our current mowers are doing. No opposition? Councilman Biggs?
Mayor, thank you. I'm, I haven't changed my mind and nothing that's been presented to me has changed my mind about this. I am not in favor of it. I just, I understand that originally it was requested and it was about the sloping and the incline and decline and all this other stuff. And then we were presented saying that there's a reevaluation. They don't think they necessarily need it for incline and we could use it for other stuff now. It just sounds like the department, regardless if they are not, is looking for an additional piece of item that I think we have the sufficient items that we can utilize to maintain this property. I'm just not in favor of this one. I, this $57,000 when it came up to us the first, this 57,000 when it first came up to us, I looked it up on my computer, the 75 that's presented to us. I found it for $57,000 already, questioned it, said, nope, it's this high. This is what it is. I just, I'm not a fan of it. It gave me a bad taste and it's still there. So I won't be in favor of that one.
I'm with Biggs.
That's not against anybody.
No, I, I would, I would agree with Councilor Biggs. I, I think spending money on a lawnmower, just to me with these funds, there's, with ARPA money, it seems a little silly.
And as much as it pains me to agree with Councilor Biggs as well, yes.
Okay. Maybe a recommendation, and we can take it back to the state, would be that, do they have to plant grass on that? Could it be ornamental, uh, you know?
Same thing, yeah.
You know? Pollinators?
I think we asked those questions, yeah.
Now. What is this?
I think we asked those questions.
Yeah.
And I, I believe we have to maintain the parking lots also, but I hope you can find otherwise.
We can put a pin in that.
The initial request was to have us remove snow to the midsection of the bridge, to the center line.
And then figure a way to turn it around. Or one guy just walk a snow blower all the way back. Yeah, that was a, that was a long debate on, or not debate, but compromise.
So not funny.
Okay, good.
Mower gone.
Watch guard.
Mower's gone.
Cameras. Police watch guard cameras, 63,000. Those folks on the spot that are here.
Before I turn it over to the good captain here, just real quick. I just really want to extend my thoughts and prayers to the Newington Police Department for the loss of one of their officers. Unexpectedly, at the age of 49, seven and a half year veteran, leaving behind three kids as we talk about budgets and things of that nature. And also to the families and victims of the hurricane who down in Florida have lost their homes and lost everything. That we sit here today and we are fortunate to have these discussions. As we know, this job is what it is and life is what it is. So taking that perspective, we are a fortunate town. We're a fortunate agency to have these discussions. So with that, my heartfelt condolences go out to that family and to that police department and the ones in Florida and North Carolina and Georgia. So, Captain, yours.
Thank you, Chief. I would like to back up just for a moment. We discussed the watch guard cameras before. I just want to clarify and, and thank you, Councilman Pentlon, for bringing it up. This money is the seed money to start the leasing program to replace not only the video cameras, the MVRs of the vehicles, but also the body worn cameras that all the officers use in the field. Everything that we have is essentially moving, if not at or past end of life, coming up at end of life for all the equipment. This is the start money so that we have the ability to be able to rotate them all through. We also currently don't have enough body cameras for all the officers. They have to share them right now. This would bring it up to the number where everyone's got their own body camera, essentially also lengthening the life of them. You only have to issue it to one person, be it a camera, be it pretty much anything, it always seems to last longer. So that's the, the watch guard system, again, required by state statute for all of us.
Any questions? Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Just one. So this gets the ball rolling, but what do you anticipate, like in the next, you know, three to five years or whatever it's going to take to replace all of the equipment?
Well, this would, sorry, this would be the seed money to replace all the equipment, to be able to bring all of it up to code, to give us all the new items. The, any maintenance fees would be part of our regular budget moving forward.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Questions? Councilman Forrest?
I think just generally, I'm sure it's a great idea. This is a perfect budgetary conversation. I don't, the urgency here is not dire, and if it is dire, then it should be paid out of our, if it's truly dire, that's exactly where our contingency fee is paid for. To Councilor Connor's point, this is regular, it's almost like the mower, like we're using ARPA funds for operating, operating the police department. Good reasons, all of them, great reasons even. And if we want, if it's that urgent and the council needs to do it, we have a contingency fee specifically designated for these types of urgencies. But this is not, this is not going to change our society and our way of life. It's just operating a well-run police department. So I don't think it's for this particular list at this particular time, if it comes up in a contingency because it's that urgent, then we perhaps should do it. And again, this is a transfer over into a lease situation, might be. And again, this is a transfer over into a lease situation, might be the best idea in the world. But I don't see the urgency of this particular item at this particular time.
I'm, I respectfully, I'll disagree with that. I, I do think there is a sense of urgency. I think this actually being the seed money gets us up to a newer version and it gets us into a better rotation, which I think over time will actually end up saving us money because it's putting us in the right direction as opposed to responding and then being forced to go out and buy new ones when one breaks down. And so I, I think this is a good seed to plant and get this process going. And, you know, as was stated, it's, it's the state statute, so it's not like we have a choice anyways.
Kenny? Thank you, Mayor. Following up on what Councilor O'Connor, this is a question for you, Captain. To be in compliance with the state statute, is there a timeframe where every officer must have a body camera?
Currently, every officer must have a body camera while on patrol.
Now?
Yes.
And, and here in Weathersfield, not every officer has a body. So are we out of compliance?
When they're on the road, they have a body camera, however, most of the time. We have them failing.
We are failing?
We are, the, the equipment is failing at times. So an officer can have a body camera that works because they're old and they're falling out of, they're out of service. Excuse me, the camera can be working when they go on patrol because of their age, because of the condition that they're in. In the middle of the shift, the camera could go out. So that's one of the reasons why we find it very important we need to replace all of these as soon as possible.
And that's actually happening, Captain, where?
It happens on occasion, yes.
If I may clarify a couple things?
Yeah, please.
Sergeant Gonzalez. So there's really two debates here. Where the money comes from is, is up to you folks. And that's obviously the, the rub. As far as a priority, I'll just, I can't, I can't tell you where the money comes from, you get to decide that. Priority is, we have to have them, okay? We have twelve in-car systems, eight are out of warranty. Most of this, those systems were purchased with asset forfeiture years down the road and they're not even under warranty anymore. They're, they're that old. So that's a priority. Body worn cameras. Years ago, we took part of the free money that the state was giving away. And at the time, the chief only wanted to do thirty-five cameras. That's not enough to outfit all the officers. His plan was to not outfit all the officers, but rotate the cameras based on when officers work. It's not a horrible plan, but in hindsight, we could, we got them for free back then. We should have, we should have got a hundred of them, but we didn't. Fast forward to now, most of those cameras have been replaced under warranty already. Okay? And the reason being is because most of them are being used sixteen hours a day minimum, some twenty-four hours a day minimum because they're shared. And of the thirty-five cameras, there are two different configurations. There's the standard configuration, which you see on TV all the time, which is one piece, one camera. And then there's a second configuration, which is a small camera, a cord down to like a pager on your belt for the power, and that's a two-piece system. Most of our officers prefer the one piece for many reasons. So again, those one-piece cameras are being used more. The lease program is a no-brainer. We tried to push for it before and we tried to push both these components into the capital budget. That's where they belong, to reoccurring costs, just like vehicles, they absolutely belong there. But again, that, that's, that's your, your battle to fight. As far as that lease program, it's a five-year lease. After three years, we, we get brand-new cameras, they replace them all. And they're under warranty those first three years. And then we're still on the lease for the last two years for a total of five, and then we own them. They should last, again, even longer than five years. We're getting them all replaced after three. And again, every officer's assigned one, so they're going to be used eight hours a day, not even eight hours a day. For those officers that work a lot, yeah, maybe they're, they're going to be used twelve hours a day on average, sixteen for someone that's really hustling. So those cameras are going to last much longer and, and we have to move on to the, the next generation of technology. No different than, most of you probably replace your cell phone every three, three, three years. Well, there's a reason for that. We're going on four years for these cameras. And almost all of them have been replaced under warranty already because they're used sixteen-plus hours a day. So again, there's two debates, where the money comes from. I, I won't give my opinion on where it should on my job, but I'll tell you, it's a priority. By law, we have to have these. The public demands it. It's been a blessing for us to wear them, even though initially, like most agencies, you're hesitant, but they've been, they've been a protection for us. And they, and they, they've worked well for us. We have nothing to hide. If you have any questions to me, I'll try to answer.
Just going to add one more thing to that. Also, we're, these old cameras are on a server. This will go to a cloud-based system, which makes it easier for us to store data, which we're not cooling a room with the HVAC system that's failing. It's in a cloud-based system. We could work with the courts with that, give them access to evidence.com to download these videos. And for FOIA purposes, as we know, we're going through a lot of, we have a lot of FOIAs. This is easier to also disseminate that information. So it's a five-year program, three-year refresh, get us to six moving forward compared to the past one where they were straight out, outright purchased. Not enough, and now we're paying for them now. So.
To Councilman Forrest's point, if it is an emergency, I mean, this is what we have a contingency account for.
If I may, I would disagree with that only because as a council, you did decide to defer this stuff to the ARPA conversation. These two lists were deferred to this conversation. Under general circumstances, absolutely. If something came up outside of the budget process, but you were aware of all these during the budget process and the decision was made to defer it to this conversation. So I think it's an appropriate use, given that. But if not, we could use contingency, but contingency is for true emergency. This was for something that's been planned and, and vocalized and discussed and presented to you all. So that'd be my, like, caution there.
Yep, you guys are comfortable?
Yeah, leave it in.
You're in?
I am. Sure.
Okay, I mean, we're not taking individual votes, okay? Still staying up there. So I'm going through my list. We have two vehicles. Requested four. Two are up here tonight at one fifteen. And there is an item on our agenda for the Mach threes as well, if I'm not mistaken.
Just take this first.
Yeah. Let me just see. Yeah. Discussion on the two, these would be Ford interceptor SUVs.
That's correct.
Okay.
So four would be double that price. That price is for two, y'all.
And this is the one where we can't, and Captain Trusie had already told us that the Mach threes would not be on patrol. The one would be an admin and then the other one would be traffic patrol. So the requests would be for two-hundred-and-thirty thousand for total, for four.
Are you lumping the Mach-Es with the Fords together?
It would be four Ford SUVs and two Mach threes for a total of six.
I would, I would separate the Mach-Es from the Ford because those are teeny, those aren't part of our, our fleet, per se. So you can't supplant our fleet with asset forfeiture.
Those would be the Mach threes. Mr. Deputy Mayor?
I'm comfortable with approving two. That's what we discussed in our committee. And I think that's a good start to. From my experience, four are requested each year. At one point, we had six new vehicles at the town garage waiting to be outfitted, so there was a big pileup of new cars. And that was at least my justification for not purchasing replacement cars that year. I believe last year, four were requested and four were approved.
Three. Three, and we only gotten one so far.
Well, four were requested and three were approved.
Now, you're talking about past practices of this police department. As we move forward, things are changing. New vehicles aren't coming in as admin packages and staying with command staff. They're coming in fully outfitted, going to MHQ, being outfitted there, so it's a faster turnaround. Once we get them in, then they're going directly to patrol. So instead of sitting idle as an admin package, only putting thirty miles on them a month, they're going to go straight to patrol and put on thirty miles a day. So that way we can get through that three-year warranty period. So if anything fails, it's fixed by the dealership, it's fixed by MHQ, it's not going to fiscal services. The past practices were the new vehicles went to the command staff, which, I, I, that's not a good practice. Quite frankly, because at the end of three years, when they're put back out into patrol, they're already out of warranty and that's where the town's paying money. So right now, with the slow turnaround, we only gotten one, which is rolled out this week. Things finally rolled it out this week. It's finally coming out and it's going to patrol. That's one, that's a cost savings for the town. Two, it's also morale booster for my police department. I know that, you know, some like brand-new vehicles as admin packages to drive around to say they have them. That's, that's, that's a waste of resources. You want them on the road, you want them in the hands of our people driving while under warranty so that way we can protect and serve our public. To give them a used vehicle that's three years old out of warranty is just not smart. And then we're upfitting it, as you say, that they're sitting backed up at fiscal service because this is an admin package that's been sitting at a PD for three years, not putting miles on it. And now we're upfitting an additional cost from parts that are sitting in fiscal services stacked on shelves. Correct me if I'm wrong, co. So here, they're coming out of MHQ fully outfitted and they're patrol cars. Admin packages will remain admin packages. That way, when they siphon through our admin people, i.e. the command staff and DD or anyone who specializes, they'll stay that way. So we're not paying up at them because they're not going to go get outfitted. Whereas patrol vehicles are coming out fully outfitted and will stay outfitted in a patrol capacity. So we have to do things smarter and that's what we're starting to do here. So the one that just rolled out, it's coming out. The second one's at MHQ right now or it's coming in? It's getting outfitted right now. That's two out of three that were budgeted for last year that we're starting to get now. So if we give us the four now, you're talking a year and a year and a half before we get those on the road. And we're going to lose four, four coming offline. And I don't know how many are going to come offline next year that are going to fiscal services. Look at it as, as a whole.
So I had requested information on the fleet, which evidently didn't get prepared for tonight.
I beg to differ.
Oh, I haven't received anything.
Um, I was, I think I have it right here.
So.
I see, I've received an email for...
Can you speak to the four?
Let me speak to, can I speak to that real quick?
Sure.
Yeah, I received an email from, of the town manager back on September fifteenth, which you requested.
Yes, that's the request I made.
Yep. Now is at, what hour did I receive that? At twelve-twenty-six, and I responded at, uh, two-thirty-eight PM, answering all your questions to that. So I have that. If you'd like to see that.
I didn't receive that.
With the list of all the fleet vehicles and mileage.
Okay.
That you requested, so I did respond to that, so.
Nevertheless, can you speak to the four vehicles that would be coming off? Why are they coming off?
Sure, the four vehicles coming off are the high school SRO vehicle, which is a Crown Victoria. The last canine spare vehicle, which is a Crown Victoria. The middle school SRO vehicle, which is a sedan.
Thank you.
And the, another sedan. All for, for mileage, wear and tear. I mean, the Crown Victorias are... That'll, that'll be the last of our Crown Victorias. We've also been phasing out the sedans as well. Everything's gone to SUVs. It's all based on mileage. Now, town, Sally may keep one of those vehicles. Sometimes if, if they can use them in town, they will keep them. But we have to, if we take in, whatever we take in, we have to turn in. So they're identified by mileage, wear and tear, usability.
Are they taken off for age?
For age?
Yes. Sally has, Sally has a twelve-year policy on vehicles?
I can't speak for Sally.
No, I'm just saying that's what she does and I don't know if it applies to the police fleet.
Ours is not based on any one thing. It's based on mileage, condition, usability, whether it's worth putting more funds to keep them up and running. I know the, the high school SRO, Eric Knapp drives it, it needs, it needs work and we've been delaying work, working on it because it's a waste of money, because we're turning it in. But again, we're waiting for Ford. That third car we ordered that we did get approved is not even to us from Ford. And I want to remind the council that the year prior to that, we put in for four vehicles and all four were canceled. So we're, we're running behind already. COVID saved us with the, with the slowdown of crime and people driving police cars.
Councilman O'Connor?
Yeah, I, you know, very similar to the comments I made about the cameras. I, I, I think an investment now pays dividends later. I think the chief eloquently described the rotation process they go through and how long it takes to get these cars out and the approach they're looking to take is, I think it's in our best interest as a town to give them the four vehicles and get that moving and on a more consistent pattern and more consistent basis. And so I would be comfortable doing that. I know we talked about this during the budgets as well. And I do remember the conversation about this coming out of the ARPA funds. So I'm comfortable with doing the four. That's my opinion.
I would echo that. I think that the plan laid forward, I think investing now would be a long-term cost savings, which that's, I've been pretty, pretty adamant and that's where I'd like to see the ARPA dollars go towards. Discussion? Councilman Forrest?
It, it makes sense, except for, we went through this during, this is a budget conversation about scheduling and operating costs. And there's a conversation here that ARPA funds are not generally, shouldn't be used to cover our budget and our operating budget. These are, this is just regular operating, we've been doing this for decades. And if it is that urgent, it should come out of contingency, but not at our ARPA. Like if we need this, if we need it now, it's a great idea. And I'm not saying it's not, it might be great. Should come out of contingency if it's that urgent and we're, we're up against it and the town needs to do it and it's such a good deal. But now, this is not transformative, getting police cars in every budget. This conver, this conversation happens every year. How many police officers, how many, how many cars? And we made a conscious effort that we were, that it was not needed at that time as a council. I may have disagreed with that at the time, but that's what the council decided through negotiation. So it, the urgency for this, for formulating what the, what our vehicle fleet should look like, the urgency for determining how many cars to purchase on what calendar. I believe that we made that decision already and now we're, we're revisiting our budget. And if it is that urgent, if things have changed, cars go down, we just talked about truck goes down, we can do it. And there may have been a set of counselors that were in a conversation about the ARPA and a set, a list and we talked about possibly funding later on. But there was no grand deal that this was the list that was going to be funded with ARPA. If there was a grand deal at that time, work shouldn't even be here, right? That, that would have just come out in our next council meeting or a couple council meetings later. We're going to pay it through ARPA, here's the list, we pass the budget, here's the ARPA, here it goes. But now we're here months later with ARPA funds, trying to fill, either fill budget holes or of course, we're sitting on a lot of money and people are coming to us, like of all kinds, and they're trying to make a pitch, rightly so, for what they want. But it's, this is not transformative. We have two vehicles, which hopefully we'll be able to approve now, getting on the road. We did talk to them about, um, one of them, I think will be a patrol car. But all that being said, I, I'm not necessarily against this, but it shouldn't come from the ARPA funds. It should just come from our regular operating funds or contingency.
Yes, Pam?
You guys are going to love this. I actually think, well, the cost of the truck and the mower is essentially the car of the extra two vehicles. And we're kind of taking that off the page. And I, and I think that that should be budgeted for next year because I don't see the urgency in that. And I actually want to add the PAL program. I, I agree with that, the, the police athletic program to this as well. I want to bump that up. I think if any, any, to Dan's point, the kids have suffered greatly through COVID. This is COVID relief money. If you even look at what the PAL is about, it's about, you know, aid and preventing juvenile crime, et cetera, et cetera, and aiding our youth. I think it's a no-brainer. And I, and I agree, we're going to be spending this anyways. And I, not that ARPA funds should do, like you said, plugging holes in the budget, but... And I, and I agree, we're going to be spending this anyways, and I, not that ARPA funds should do, like you said, plugging holes in the budget, but I don't know. I, I feel like you, you said we revisit this during ARPA. Well, here, they need it. I'm, I'm in favor of the four cars plus adding the PAL.
Councilman O'Connor?
I, I just, just to respond to Councilor Forrest, you know, right, wrong, or indifferent, we kicked this down the ARPA path during the budget session, and so we'll fund this during ARPA. And now we're here, and they're asking for it. You know, there's a compelling case for it. I think, um, as a long run, I think this does benefit the town, and I think it will give us longer life on these vehicles, and the way the chief described it in putting these right into patrol where they're needed the most makes a lot of sense. And so, you know, I have no problem supporting the four cars as requested, and, um, we did cut out the truck. We did cut out the mower, and I do agree, putting the PAL up into that as well makes a lot of sense for the town as a whole, so.
Councilman Pentelaw?
Yeah, just to kind of respond to Councilor Forrest, and again, I'm, I'm with you. I don't think we should be using these necessarily specifically to basically fill holes in the budget, but I think why I'm more in favor of this is they did come to us, that you just heard, with a comprehensive plan of how to get more use out of the vehicles. And if they say they need four vehicles to implement that plan, then I'm all in favor of it because in the end, we're gonna, we're gonna save in the long run. And to echo everybody, I, I, I'm 100% in favor of the PAL. I see what it does in the city of Waterbury, the city of Hartford. Um, I think having the officers more engaged with, with the children in town, I think will pay dividends down the road as far as, like, Councilor Carbone's comments of, of reducing juvenile crime, they get to know. Specifically, the kid is a different sort of relationship with them. Um, I know a lot of people who have come out of the PAL program who become officers, so it, you know, there, there's, there's dividends to be paid with a program like that. So, um, I will definitely be supporting four cars as well as implementation of the PAL program.
Councilman Lesser?
Thank you, Mayor. I certainly agree with the PAL program and the benefits of it and supporting it now and moving it up to priority. As for the number of cars, um, I understand the, the, the need and I understand the process and the replacement. I, I too am concerned about how we budget it and would prefer maybe doing two now and doing two in six months or, or potentially more than two, but we'll be budgeting in April and May, um, six, six from seven months from now. And it, it does belong more in the budget process. I understand this is money that we have for ARPA and we deferred or we, we, we didn't take this up or pass this during the budget process. But I, I would be more in support of the original proposal here on the list of two and maybe taking two during the budget process, um, six, seven months down the road. But definitely the PAL program, definitely the cameras, which I think we already agreed on, and I, I would prefer to stick to this list, but open to more discussion, but that's, that's where I'm at right now.
Can I just ask a question to Chief?
Yeah.
Can you respond to that? Are you comfortable with two and then two during the budget?
Well, I don't, before he answers that, the way you sound right now is that we're guaranteeing that there's going to be two during budget, and I don't want to put a guarantee that budget, we're going to give out two more vehicles. We will reevaluate during budget season, but I don't want it to sound like, hey, Chief, we're going to give you two right now, and then budget time, we're going to give you two more. Like, that's not what you guys are proposing, correct? I just want to make sure that's clear.
Well, actually, I got a quick question.
I'm going to ask for four. Budget. I mean, ask the chief.
Yeah, well.
Chief, when, at the next budget, you're going to ask for four vehicles. Is that correct?
I'm going to ask for six.
Right. Okay. So it's not two.
I'm just saying.
I'm not going to ask for six. What I'm really going to do is, that's what I've been doing since I've gotten here nine months ago, is evaluate how this police department runs and how can we make it more cost efficient, is what I'm doing. So if I buy upfront now, if I pay, if I spend money now to save money, that's what I'm trying to do. Um, I'm not trying to milk the town for anything. I'm trying to run a department as efficiently as possible, put less cost to the town, and provide the best services for this town. So if I have to pay upfront by outfitting a vehicle to put it on patrol that stays there for a longer period of time upfront compared to not outfitting a vehicle, putting it and letting it sit idle at a police department, not getting any mileage on it to outfit it three years later when it's out of warranty and transmissions are going and we're paying more money, then that makes no sense. I, I want to do it upfront, so when the training goes in a three-year window, we can, they can replace it and not the town, or we get a newer vehicle from them, and then we go forward, and that lasts five, six, 10 years down the road compared to something else that's going to get, that's going to go. So that's the way I'm looking at it. Is how do, how, how do we make this cost efficient? And sometimes you have to spend money to save money.
Um, the question I was going to ask of the four vehicles, or three vehicles, one's online, one's coming online, and one hasn't been delivered yet.
One hasn't been delivered.
Have we expended any funds on that third vehicle? Or, I mean, did we purchase it?
That's purchased out of last year's budget. It should have been.
The funds are still there. We, we don't officially purchase it, so we take delivery.
Right, but it's budgeted for.
It's set aside.
Yep. Okay.
I just had a quick follow-up. So just to follow up with that. So if we gave you the four hypothetically, if we approved to put the four in now, are you still going to ask for six cruisers come next budget?
I might ask for two, depending on where we're at when it comes to reevaluating the fleet, and that's why we're here. I could come in here and ask you for six, seven, eight at a time, but that's not feasible, and you'll look at me like you're really not making any sense. What's cost efficient for us and for the town is what I'm getting at. If I could buy four now and purchase two next year, purchase one, I'm being honest. The old practice of policing was come to you and ask you for everything and hope I get half of it. I'm coming, saying this is what I need.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Uh, Chief, I, I love what you're doing with the planning of trying to get this, let's say, get this vehicle situation under control and, and the way you've restructured how the cars are going to be deployed and so forth. That, that is all great stuff. There's a lot of history here prior to you coming on board with, with, I'm going to talk about maintenance. I'll try to be real quick, but the maintenance concept in this town is to replace vehicles at 12 years of age, no more, regardless of their condition, okay? And I don't know if the police department tracks the cost analysis of the vehicles. I know the maintenance department does not, and I've been asking them to, give me some real data that shows when a car is a certain age with certain miles and, you know, it's deteriorated and it's going to cost more to fix the transmission or whatever it goes, and it's going to be out of service for more time and things like that, where there's a break-even point. It makes no sense to keep that vehicle. You're better off replacing it. So I don't know if, if this list that I've just looked at, you know, are these cars that are planned to come off, are they truly in bad shape and they've cost us a lot of money? I, I don't know that you would have that information because certainly the mechanic's garage does not have that information. And so I'm a little bit hesitant to, to say, yeah, let's replace four vehicles. And I'm going to share this. This just goes to the, to the.
Can I comment real quick?
Sure, sure.
Um, first, I, I'm not going to speak for fiscal services and how they handle the fleet. Um, policing as a whole is not your typical, um, fleet. We run our cars a lot longer. We're susceptible to more accidents. We're driving them in all types of weather. So our, our wear and tear on our vehicles are different than the average. And, and granted, you know, I would like to say this, that, you know, Sally Katz, uh, quite frankly, has done an outstanding job the last two days, dealing with the water main break and dealing with the power outage at the PD. So utmost respect for fiscal services. I'm not going to comment on, on that. But when it comes to the fleet and the fleet of a police department, uh, it's a totally different outlier in how we deal with our cars. We're driving them. There's different types of driving for a police vehicle. The wear and tear on them. We drive our vehicles harder. We drive them faster. We drive them in different terrain. We drive them in different types of climate. So I wouldn't say the maintenance on a fleet vehicle, on a police vehicle is the same as maintenance on a town car, so.
Sure, I agree 100%. I'm trying to understand who tracks the costs and the wear and tear on the vehicles and, and who comes up with the fact that this vehicle is no longer cost-effective to operate?
I can't speak for, for what the, the fiscal services does or doesn't do, but they should be doing that, obviously, just like they should be monitoring gas consumption, um, the mileage at that time, et cetera. It's not just mileage on the vehicle. It's wear and tear. It's seat cushions. It's idle hours.
Tires.
Kill the car. So just more data on the cars returning in, like I said, one of which I think Town Garage may keep to use. Like, they routinely will if there's a car salvageable enough to keep as a gopher car to drive around town. Sometimes a car comes to Town Hall and it's being used up here. But the, the four cars that we mentioned that we're turning in are 27, which is the spare K-9 Crown Victoria. It's a 2011 with 72, almost 73,000 miles. Car 30, which is a 16, um, spare SUV, it's got 100,000 miles. Car 48, which is the middle school tourist sedan, has 105,000 miles. Car 22, which is, um, the high school SRO, is a 2010. It has approximately 60,000 because we don't know the dial stopped working five years ago. And that car needs a ton of work and, and no patrol officer is driving a Crown Victoria. I'll say for no, uh, chief of police or admin staff are driving Crown Victorias because they're that old. So those are the four cars returning in. I think the first one I mentioned, car 27, I think the town may keep because it's, it's in the best shape. It's a gopher car, for sure, and those cars will run in that capacity. So that's a little more background on the cars returning in. As far as like some of the maintenance and controls, I know it's been brought up and cut from the budget. Sally put in, to defend her, and she's not here, she put in software to track some of this stuff. It was cut from the budget.
Uh, let me correct you. We put in software to track the, the vehicles and the maintenance costs. They purchased the software, and they never upgraded their system to allow the software to be implemented.
They never, it was not, went, no continuation or follow-through on.
I've been asking for four years. I asked when I was out there in the audience. And there's a reluctance to provide real data. I, that's, that's what I work on, numbers. Show me that it's cost-effective to replace the vehicle.
I would just say that's.
I don't want to talk all night.
That's something that fiscal services should be tracking.
And we, we can make sure that those are provided as part of the budget process from now forward. We'll make sure whatever's tracked, you provide, you're provided with all the data as part of this process, which should have been provided before. We'll make sure it's done in the future.
Mike, do we have, uh, do we deserve consensus for the four cars? I honestly view this as pay now or pay maybe a lot more later.
I'm good.
I think it's a, I think it's a good idea because I think it's a merit, a meritable idea. I'd like for it to come from contingency, but, because I think it's more appropriate. And, but the idea's got the right, the right idea. Yeah, that's where I'm, that's where I'm from.
Councilwoman Carbone, I mean, she brought up a good point. You know, the F-350 and the mower, 100 and, just over 115,000 for the other two. I mean, if we want to take in consideration, and I understand what Fred's apprehension was earlier on, taking out a contingency, we did make a conscious decision to put this into ARPA. But, you know, I'll put it out there, two vehicles on ARPA and two vehicles on contingency. Folks are okay with that. That way we don't push it off to the budget. I don't want to go against Town Manager's thought process on that either, but, fine. That way we take it off of next year's budget. Well, we don't take, we don't put it on to next year's budget. We don't use up too much of the ARPA funding.
I would prefer to buy four cars out of the ARPA funds, not use contingency. I, I don't want to agree to four cars, but I would rather do that than use contingency for it. I'm just one vote.
In the, in the, for what it's worth category, I'm in the exact opposite. I'd prefer to that these be budgeted and not come out of ARPA, so. Being transparent.
In an act of compromise?
And I guess does this play into the next thing that's coming on the agenda too, which is the?
The Mach 3s?
Yeah, I mean, I think that those are also sort of in this package. Is that right?
What's that?
Versus the planning?
They would be outside.
From a conceptual concept of how cars are going to be.
Uh, no, I don't believe so because those would be admin versus patrol cars.
I believe one of those was patrol cars we talked about.
We can, Maki's. The Maki's. It's a traffic car, but it'll be utilized. It, it's going to be a traffic car, but it's also going to assist with patrol. It's an addition. That's why we have the additional traffic officer there, which I can tell you right now, he's doing a fantastic job because he's stopped 181 cars this month alone. And then we had 84 last year this month. Um, so I can tell you right now, that's a fantastic job on that traffic car, but he would be assisting with the patrol, so it would be the additional officer on the road. So it's going to be unmarked, but it has lights in it, so it's, it's, for that capacity, it's dual capacity.
I suppose what I was commenting to you, to the council, is that we wouldn't want to buy these four now and say, okay, well, now we bought our four. Can you?
Just bring your microphone.
So the next item that comes up on the agenda is the Maki's. Say, well, we're all set. Now we don't need this.
Well, that, it's totally separate.
Yeah.
I agree with you, but I'm making sure that we have that understanding.
Are we? Yep. Two and two?
Two and two.
Are they compromised?
Plus the pound.
Everybody?
What are you doing?
Two vehicle, I mean, these would be the, the, two of the four requested at 115. So 115 from ARPA and 115 from contingency.
And do we include the PAL program in this? Is everybody consensus with that? I'm okay with that for sure. Are you guys okay with the PAL program?
Absolutely.
Yeah, the PAL program is actually, that's, that's right, that's straight down the road.
So with those items right now, Mayor, um, that brings the total that you all have agreed to, to $1,297,000 to use of ARPA funds, which would leave you with a balance. I'm sorry, scratch that. $1,182,000 of ARPA funds, which would leave you with a balance of $3,022,698 left to be determined how you use it. That's 115 coming out.
Well, really, that's, we're going to revisit the whole police generator thing too at some other point, so really.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we still have the community.
Yeah, you still have $3 million to either, if you wanted to set some aside or.
Is that good?
Yep.
Yep. Are we going to vote on these as separate items or?
You can do it as one motion, but you'll have to.
Yeah, and we can just list the ones.
A motion that we just vote on everything we talked about for the last three hours?
Um, yeah. Well, we haven't said anything about community center HVAC, yeah. I think this would fall into the category of what Councilor Forrest was talking about, where looking more at the, uh, I, I don't know what type of shape it is. I'm assuming it needs to be replaced, but kind of going with, along with the study that he mentioned and waiting on that purchase, um, I, I'd be in favor of holding off on this for now. Okay.
Mayor, the officers all set with us?
Nope.
We have the Maki's.
I was, they're standing there.
I was going to.
Make a motion to move it up?
Yeah, well, I mean, I think.
I just know how long we could go with, uh, discussion, so.
Yeah, we're still under 3A, so what I heard for consensus was two vehicles at 115, watch guard cameras at 63, dump truck and a Plow 273, IT upgrades at 100, radio, uh, radio system 135, uh, air tanks at 146, and right now the PAL program.
What about the H?
I thought we did H.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I, oh, I do have a check next to it. 200, sorry.
Generator are waiting to see what Sally comes back at.
And the total right now is 1182 that I have, same thing that Fred has.
Yep.
Yep. And we're going to hold off for right, uh, this discussion just in a sense of time, uh, the 500,000, the nonprofit, and the building maintenance.
And you're going to also allocate everything but the top one?
Yep, for right now. So we'll do the three, but again, those are allocated out of the 230,000. 230,000.
Correct.
What's already, has been allocated.
Yeah, he said PAL, but we're called up in parking right, not profit.
One question, just clarification, are we voting on the two cruisers that are coming out of ARPA as, or contingency as well, or just the ARPA funds?
Just the ARPA funds for right now. I think we can probably put that contingency on a separate item at some point.
Next meeting?
Next meeting soon. Everybody okay?
So we need a motion, yes.
So here's the motion, and then you're going to read the items.
So, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get clarity. So are we not talking about the Community Center HVAC?
Not yet. That was a comment Counselor Pentelove talked about to be tied into the resiliency, we're resilient, is it the resiliency committee?
Yeah.
Financial resilience committee, yeah.
That's why I just want to make sure, so that one is coming off right now.
For now.
All right, that's, that's why I just want to make clear. So I have my notes for next meeting.
But further discussion per the meetings with Tom and, or Deputy Mayor and Councilman Forrest.
Thank you very much.
On those. Because there could be some energy savings, and I would take a look at the state and see if there's any funds from Bond Commission for-
Absolutely.
So just for clarification, we're approving eight items on this list? So, yep, so-
Yes. And then three, we'll do that, yeah.
Mayor, I can start a motion in there.
No, I'm just, I'm trying to get clarification for Sue.
Eight is correct.
Yeah, no, for Sue, which, which individual for Sue?
I'm going to list them.
Okay.
If that's okay, Sue?
Sure.
And you guys correct me if I get it wrong, which is very possible. So I make a motion to budget inappropriate ARPA revenue replacement funds for the following projects and strategic initiatives. SCBA equipment matching funds, $146,000. Police Department HVAC, $200,000. Radio system upgrades, $135,000. IT equipment upgrades, $100,000. Dump truck with plow, $273,000. Police watch guard cameras, $63,000. Two police vehicles, $115,000. And the police, police athletic programs, $150,000. In the same motion?
Yeah, in the same.
Okay. And to budget appropriate the following previously reserved strategic initiative funds for the following project. 40,000, excuse me, fire department evaluation, 40,000. Class and compensation study, 50,000. Council strategic plan facilitator, 25,000. Second.
Thank you for all those motions and the quick turnaround on that last motion. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Aye. Councilman Hill, if I'm not mistaken?
Yep.
Motion's been made and seconded and voted, 8 to 1. Okay. And as the officers are still with us, I will make a motion to move item 4B, Ford Mach-E cars up to the next item.
Second.
Any opposition? All those in favor?
I vote on that, A anyway.
Oh.
It's going to be tabled, right?
Okay, oh, no, never mind. I see what you're doing. Go ahead.
No, yeah, we're just moving. Yep. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay? Aye, motion carries. Okay. As we're up here, this is the Ford Mach-E vehicles. And Chief, if you would, give us a brief overview on how we've gotten here and where we're at.
How we gotten here is, I think it starts with Councilman Forrest.
And we're done. And we're done.
When I first was hired back in November, he asked, hey, how can we make this fleet green, electric? And at that time, we did a study based on your behalf with Tesla, and actually Sergeant Gonzalez was the one who prepared it. And we researched that vehicle and researched for Westport and so forth and so on. At that time, we tabled it because we didn't see, right now, right now Tesla's not suitably rated. So that's a concern of ours. And it has been officially outfitted for a police vehicle. Recently Ford has come out with the Mach-E electric vehicle, which we decided to revisit that, to see how it's being utilized as, by police departments and other agencies, specifically NYPD purchased 184 and 170 have gone to patrol, something that number right now. They've been outfitted, they have a cage, they have, they've integrated the computer system with the next gen report writing system, so you don't have the MDT in there. It's standalone right there, I don't have that extra keyboard in there. There's lights in there. So they're making a police package. It's a crossover, so it's not your full-size SUV, and it's not a sedan, it's in between. So it has some room in it. So we decided to revisit it as a TNA, you know, test and experiment it. It's not coming out of the town budgets, out of asset forfeiture, which, you know, as we discussed, the fleet, I can't supplant my fleet would ask for, this is an addition to it. It's a TNA, it's not part of the fleet, it's an electric vehicle that we're looking at, seeing, you know, we sat down with Councilman Forrest last week for almost two hours, hour and a half, and he grilled us with Town Manager, which I appreciate, because if you have any questions for us, I mean, that's, that's the way to do it, to get the understanding. We welcome council to come see us and talk to us on an individual basis or as a group, to discuss these matters. That's what we're here for. So we can sit down and answer those questions. And we did, for the most part, battery size, battery life, I mean, tran, I mean, it was, and these two did a great job of doing the research on it and presenting it to him. So I would guess would be, you ask us the questions, so we can inform you of it. So I would open the floor and to all of you with specific questions, or Councilman Forrest, you want to lead the conversation, it's yours.
Councilman Biggs?
It's okay, go ahead, Council.
Thank you, Mayor. You may have answered this question with Matt, but my biggest thing with this was capacity. We already see a lot of things happening at the police department as it is with generators and all that whatnot. How has that evaluation been done as far as adding these, this pod or these pods to charge them, and what that would do to the department's current system?
The level of power that comes out of, so we have two 80 amp chargers that are designed to be put into the system. The amount of draw with the two 80 amp chargers is not significant compared to the draw that's already been done, being done in the building already. The current generator would be able to handle it. We're only charging two cars at a time, you know, at most two cars at a time. If we have to slow down and do one at a time, based upon the range that's available in the vehicle and types of use of the vehicles they're going to have, we'll be able to sustain that without a problem.
When you say the current generator?
Leaving the possibility open.
I'll just mention it. That's all that, Mayor.
Councilman Lesser?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I'm very much in favor of this. I think it's a great incremental way to test the viability of electric vehicles in the police department. So applaud you guys for taking this, this step. My question is around the pilot program. So we're going to, if we approve this, get these, these two cars. And what is the pilot timeframe? And what kind of things are you going to be evaluating during the pilot program to see if we can expand this program in the future, as police departments all over Connecticut and the state and the country are, are also doing similar types of things? What is, I want to know a little bit more about the pilot program, the timing of it, and kind of the evaluation process?
We're going to look at these vehicles for, for over a year. I want to give a 12-month period. We'll do six, we'll do in increments, like a three, six, nine, 12, and evaluate how they're working out. I, realistically, in the beginning, I wanted one vehicle to do traffic and one for an admin package. But as I see how well our traffic guy is doing, I might debate on putting both of them into traffic and being unmarked and being out there and tackling the hotspots and stuff in town, and being more proactive. And twofold, because that, that car's going to get run a lot longer. So if it's not being run by a traffic officer, we might have an officer who's on patrol jump in it and use that for patrol. And try to run it as long as we can't see how long the battery lasts, how much we draw on it, when it's idle, when it's not idle, how much power, which is, I guess is minimum from when the electronics, the lights, LED lights that are put into it, the computer system, how much of that's going to be a draw on the battery, and what size battery we need for the vehicle. So there's a lot of things we're going to look at and see, is this a viable option for us and for the town? And it's a starting point, because at some point, somewhere, this town is going to go in that direction. And at least you have something to gauge the rest of the town over, off of. I mean, obviously, it's not a police vehicle, there are other towns, I'm not going to speak for fire, fiscal, whatever kind of cars, but it's still technology, it's electric, and we've got to learn how to deal with it, either now or later. And I'd rather deal with it now at a shorter cost and try and implement this all at once and later at a higher cost. So this is actually beneficial for us and for the town. We're testing something out, and you're going to learn from it.
Just, thank you, Chief. Just a quick follow-up question. Do we know of other towns in greater Hartford who are also piloting? I know there's in Connecticut, I know across the country, and you mentioned the NYPD. Is there any in our area that are also piloting?
As we are, Westport's the only town that we know of in Connecticut that has Westport.
Okay, thank you.
And they have one, just one.
Thank you.
Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Chief, I see that the cars that we're talking about are a 21 and a 22. And from what I, my limited knowledge of electric vehicles, unlike Professor Forrest, yeah. Why wouldn't we be, why wouldn't we be ordering 23 models, you know, keeping in mind that the technology's improving and the cars are evolving and so forth?
Well, the vehicle's going to evolve with time. And right now, these are used around the lot at a cheaper rate. We can get them now and outfit them compared to waiting on a 23 to come offline. And the bugs are being worked out, quite frankly, on the other ones.
They're used vehicles?
Yes.
And that's still available, because we didn't put any money down and-
Right.
Trying to have the gold car for us for a couple months now.
We did have two used.
Do we know what the cost is for a 23?
23 pricing hasn't been announced yet, then I believe, for Mach-Es.
About a new cost of a 22. I mean, are we getting a deal on these because they're used cars?
Well, I just mentioned your name, we're definitely getting a deal. So, yes, we're getting as much of deals as we can, they're in high demand. The reason that there's a handful of used ones, when I say used, like 8,000 miles on them, is because the value of used cars, as you know, has gone up. So people that have had them briefly are trading them in and getting new ones, but they're ordering them. And it's, it's, the lead time is not convenient to police work right now. And just to jump on with the chief as far as the pilot, again, we had a great conversation with Counselor Forrest, and, you know, these are, these are sedans, and, and we want SUVs ultimately. They're going to be traffic slash patrol cars, and I think we get caught up in the terms, but patrol, really patrol for us is like everything, prisoner cage and back, the whole nine. Well, these cars are not really going to be that. And, and, and that's okay. We can use them other capacities. We want to beat them up. I've spoken to you offline, maybe, maybe they're not good for us. But this is a great opportunity to, to run them 16 hours a day and charge them and run them 16 hours, keep doing that, and see what happens when the, when the police officer drives the car. Because we know they're rated for not that type of driving, and we, you know, let's see what the batteries, how long they last. Let's see how long the car holds out. And honestly, we're holding out for the better technology. I mentioned, we mentioned it in our meeting, that we may not, if we get these two, we may, we may wait two years before we buy something, because we want them a little bit better, a little bit bigger.
Do you think you'll get a satisfactory evaluation, being that they're a used car, they already have some miles on them? I don't know if they've been beat up, or they're in really great shape, or?
The one that, I, may still be there, I think someone mentioned it may not, and it may not, because we've looked at several now in the last couple months, you know, is one of their employees who traded it in and ordered a new one, and it was likely used, one of their mechanics. So, and we're, we're buying a good used certified car, and they carry the new warranty, so we're going to be good. You know, really it's a matter of technology. Of course, every year the technology gets better.
Yep.
So if we did buy these two, I would, I would advise we're not going to buy any next year. We're going to beat these up for a year and a half, and then, and then reevaluate. You know, and may, maybe we choose a different platform or a different car manufacturer, because they're all making them now. Chevy Blader's going to come out with one, Ford's going to come out with a bigger SUV. We really like the Lightning, and everyone loves the Lightning now for Ford. It's a bigger platform, and we could really use the cargo space for equipment, especially with the savings of electricity instead of gas. But you can't get one right now. So.
Thank you. And, and by the way, I wasn't concerned about you using my name to get a good price. I was really concerned about you guys running my vehicles and figuring out what I'm driving, so I hope it pulled over.
It's a Dodge pickup truck. Yeah, just real quick, more of a comment. I'm, I'm fully in support of this. I think this, this is sort of a no-brainer. I mean, when you look at it, I think it's inevitable. We're, we're going towards electric vehicles. Ford itself has announced a, a time period where they'll be producing nothing but electric vehicles. I think this is a great way that the town can evaluate its resources, what sort of training that we need, and I think it's a good opportunity to sort of look at possible cost savings or even possible cost increases, you know, inevitably, if all of a sudden in 10 years it all goes electric. I mean, I think the town needs to be prepared and actually budget for it. So with that, if nobody else has any comments, well, Mike, I'll yield to you.
Sure. Good to hear that they're under warranty, at least under warranty as new vehicles. My questions are for the infrastructure to generate these or power these. Is that a rebate? Is there any type of ever-source incentive program?
So the $9,000 that's cited in the documentation is the cost to us after the rebates are applied. There's an ever-source rebate of $20,000 towards the equipment and the installation of it. Due to the hand digging specifically, it's an extra cost due to labor and, and time to be able to do that. So that $9,000 amount is the total cost out of pocket for us.
And that would charge-
For the two, for, for two chargers. Two chargers with two plugs on each charger.
Four total.
Four plugs, yes.
And what's the rationale to have, if we were getting two now, why are we getting
It's part of the-
Four?
It's part of the program with ever-source we had to get to.
Okay. Is there a way we can look at any infrastructure funds? I know, you know, part of the federal Build Back Better was for EV.
We're actually meeting with our grant writer later this week to go over getting them for multiple locations throughout.
And all of that, that $10,000 is part of our asset forfeiture funds, be able to pay for that. Yeah, that's, yeah. The asset forfeiture is covering the entire cost of the program.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Take that back. Use it. Okay. Matt?
I'll make a motion. Shoot, I've been here for four hours. I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of two Ford Mach-E select vehicles and charging stations.
Second.
Mayor? Just want to thank you guys for meeting the other day. It was an idea that I did bring to the police chief, and you never really know if it's got any merit. And I'm glad that you took it seriously and, and looked into it. I also want to thank Officer Gonzalez, who really knew his stuff when we had our, our conversation. And I was a little worried in the beginning, as I asked to put it on pause. I want to thank the council for putting it on pause just for a second, so we can make sure, or at least the best of our ability, make sure that the use case of these particular vehicles is going to suit the intended needs. The conversation, please correct me if I'm wrong, gentlemen, is that one will be in the traffic division and also may be used as a patrol car when needed, and it was kind of like the, the all-use car. And then one will be sort of more on the administrative side, to see if maybe there's a difference in the wear and tear of these particular cars for those two particular uses. But it's not that, but one of them will be in their full use and sort of in a traffic patrol realm. And when we talked about some of the technicalities, not to get too deep into it, but want to make sure the battery was big enough, how long are we going to be able to use these cars? We have to charge them, how fast is it charged? Are we going to be sitting there with these patrol cars or these cars in the back? And we're just sitting there charging all day, but we're not using them, right? And they didn't want that sort of visual, especially if we're a leader in this area and the region. But that's not necessarily the case. We did some quick math, and we might be looking at, we asked how many, you know, miles we drive around Weathersfield, a particular shift, 30 or 40 on the average, I think we talked about. And then if we're even using some lights, if that's 50 miles, these battery capacities are upwards of 200-plus miles. So we can go two, three shifts before having a fully charged, maybe even more. But we're going to find out some of that. But at least it wasn't going to be a one shift, wait eight hours, one shift, wait eight hours, right? So we wanted to have success in our first, in our first shot. So there was a lot of conversation about that. And then also, as a side note, we talked about, you know, the use of these cars, but also the building of the infrastructure in the back of our police department. And there was conversation about the Mercury contract. One of the individuals came up here and talked about that. We talked substantially about that, whether or not that particular contract or that particular method by which we would build the infrastructure in the back of our police facility was the best contract that we could get. best contract that we could get. And I think the officers said they're gonna go back and look at that particular contract, see if that was the right and best use of our funds, since the $10,000 is in excess of a grant which they found and applied for successfully of $30,000 from EverSource, I think it was.
Twenty. Just to clarify, and the grant, the grant is purely just for installation costs up to the first $20,000.
Right.
So that they, it doesn't cover the purchase of the chargers themselves.
Yeah, that's what we're paying in asset forfeiture, plus the installment.
So they took initiative, found grant money, significant grant money, applaud you for that, and then applied it into a successful operation, I think, that we'll have here. I think it's smart to be able to move into four as we sort of move down this road. Now we've got capacity, we're already digging up the lawn, right? So at least let's put some capacity in there. I think that's very bright. And I'm really, and then as it matches with our concepts about how we're globally gonna look at electrification or, or energy, I think this, this matches very closely. We talked about Tesla. Tesla's ordering time is a year out, at least, probably for Model Y, which would be maybe what you guys are looking for as far as the size goes. But right now, these are ready to go, and they're, and we're able to bring them into use, and we have the asset forfeiture funds to do it. So it really matched on a lot of levels with battery size, use case, and as I was told many times, that Ford has a police product, and they're able to work with police officers and develop an environment where they can operate successfully and ergonomically. And that, that other manufacturers at this time may not quite have that commitment to policing in the modern day. And that may change, and I'm sure we'll investigate those on, on the way through. But for all those reasons, including the fact that we could start this process, I think it's a great idea, and I thank the rest of the councilors for their support as we go down this path.
Just be careful, in 10 years, Councilman Forrest will be asking for the Jetsons flying cars through Weathersfield. Just kidding. Thank you for all your hard work, everybody on this. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pos nay. Hearing none, ayes have it, motion carries.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, council, appreciate it.
Back to our unfinished business, item 3B. This is the reformatting of the town council agenda process. This is something that the town manager has come to us with, and I will leave it up to you.
I'll just keep it brief. I, I know that, I've spoken to a few of you about this proposal. The proposal was to add a consent agenda to the agenda to kind of prevent what we just went through right now, having staff stay back so late into the meeting to, to present something that's essentially a bid. The consent agenda would allow you just to vote on it without presentation, but if you wanted to, a presentation, you could ask that the item be removed from consent, and then we handle it right away, immediately after the consent agenda's voted on. I've heard some concern about that proposal. Alternatively, it's been proposed that maybe we can just move bids up as a first council action, just so staff can get in and get out. I'm fine with either way, but I just throw it out there. My whole goal is to make it so staff doesn't have to be here till the end of the meeting like this. I just don't think it's fair to them, because they've gotta stick around here for the whole night and then show up first thing in the morning. So if we can allow for them to be earlier on the, the agenda, that, that would be my goal.
Discussion. Council, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Yeah, that was actually my comment, maybe somebody else made similar comments, but I personally like having the bids individual and open for discussion. I think we generally do a good job of asking the right questions. Sometimes it gets a little tedious, but usually those are on the more controversial issues. I, I'm thinking of some of the routine ones, like paving contracts and things like that. You know, we have talked about, well, we keep using the same contractor all the time, and maybe we have to shift gears and do something different. And I think there's a lot of value added to that. So I'm not really in favor of the consent agenda format. I had suggested possibly moving the bids up to the top of the page so that we could get staff in and out promptly. I, I think that's a good start. I think we ought to look at possibly limiting, like presentations to maybe one, or ordinances or public hearings to maybe one per, per meeting, especially some of those where we had, you know, lengthy public comments, and, you know, we were two hours in before we even started talking about anything. So tonight with the ARPA, I was, I was confident that we were not gonna be able to hammer everything out in one hour, but, you know, that's just the way it worked. So I think there's other ways to manage the time, and no one likes staying out here till 10, 11 o'clock at night, so that's, those are my two cents.
Councilman Lesser?
Thank you, Mayor. I think we need to make our meetings more efficient, one for the staff, as the town manager pointed out, but two for the public. I feel badly that the second public comment sometimes will come at 11, 11:30, 12 o'clock, and it's not good for, for anybody, particularly the staff and, and the public. I am in favor of the consent agenda, and we can move things off the consent agenda if we need to, or if there's specific bids. But if it's the consensus of the council that we move the bids up instead of, as the deputy mayor said, instead of, I still think that's an improvement over what we have now, and I could support that, but I, I would prefer the consent agenda, which is used in a lot of legislative bodies, and you can move things off the consent agenda if there's something that concerns you or you want a further explanation. But the goal of becoming more efficient as a body and the staff not having to stay here as late and the public not waiting for second comments oftentimes 11, 11:30, 12 o'clock is a big step in the right direction. So I would support the consent agenda, but also a compromise if people would rather just move the bids up in the, in the process. Thank you, Mayor.
One more?
For the second time, we could actually put a rule in so that...
Can't speak a second.
Can't speak no more than two.
Yeah, okay. I'm not familiar with how the consent agenda works in the legislature and so forth in other communities, but if during counselor comments, a, a individual counselor wants to move something off to, off the agenda, does that require a vote by everybody?
No. Essentially, the way it works is, it would be, you know, counselor, deputy mayor, would you like, do you have any comments? You know, you can make your comments about whatever. Do you have anything to, to take off the consent agenda item? Yes, I'd like to remove item B for discussion. And then that would just come off, then the next thing would come up after all, counselor comments would be consent agenda. You'd all vote, whatever's left. Might not be anything left, but sometimes there are three or four items, and you could just vote for them at once if there, if there's nothing controversial. Then immediately following that vote, we bring up item B and bring up a staff member, go through the process, just like we do now. It would just be early on the agenda. I even gave a sample agenda for tonight's agenda. I, I provided a, what it would look like if we did tonight's agenda in that version. Asked it to be added, but anyway. Is it? I thought it was. But anyway, and there's also the order of business. I'll note that I did shift around new business to be after unfinished business, and then other business towards the end, just to, it made more sense than having new business first, but.
Would you, would the mayor set the consent agenda in the beginning, like as it got, when we got published and we get our agenda? Would we see like items on the consent agenda right away? Or would there be the regular ones, and then a counselor would make a comment to move it over?
Well, that's, yeah, that was my question, because we would all look at it, and we would talk amongst our caucuses, and if we didn't have a problem with it, I think at that point, then Kenny and I would have a conversation and...
So, so part of the reason of moving up the discussion, the, the agenda review that we have, we do it this week as opposed to next week, is the way it used to be done. So with the mayor and the deputy mayor, we meet on Wednesday this week, so right after the council meeting, two days later, we meet to talk about the next agenda. That's when that would come up. We say we have, we could, I would say, look, we have four bids, I propose they go under consent, do you have any issue with that? And they would say yes, no, indifferent. I would do the same thing, Ken. Later on, we use a meet on Friday of this week, and same thing, do you have any issues? They could go, go back to you all and say, you know, this is what we've talked about for consent, is there any concern? And again, if there are any concern with any of the items, anybody can pull it.
Yeah, I do. I was wondering how you got to the first part.
Yeah.
So you're anticipating that the agenda will actually have a bunch of items on consent, because we've already had a conversation.
Ideally, yeah, ideally, yeah. It might take a while to get there, but I think repetition and certain things are pretty redundant and, you do it every year.
My investigations are a perfect example, something that could go on there.
Correct.
The, now, I love the idea of not getting the agenda on the Friday before a Monday meeting, which actually does not leave a lot of time. So are you anticipating now that we will actually get our agenda in our packet the Fri-, the Friday a week before the meeting?
No, I'm still suggesting you get it the following week. We, we made that Thursday now, it's not Friday. We gave you the extra weekday. It used to be Friday at 4, 5 o'clock.
Yes.
You would get it. Now it's Thursday, the end of the day. That's our goal right now. Frankly, with agenda management, I think we can streamline that and get it to you Wednesday, but I wouldn't do any sooner than that, because it just, there's, there's too much that has to take place to get all the documents and everything for staff.
All right, I would, I, having an effort to move that when, when council gets the packet up days, however many we can do it, I would support that concept. I'm getting in on a Friday, we're going on vacation, have kids at whatever games or whatever it is, at least very little time to work things out beforehand, right? And maybe that's some of the, some of this could have, probably could have worked out beforehand, but having time to do that with our schedules is not easy when it's a shortened time. Get it on a Friday.
That was one of the first things we talked about, was getting that. Town manager had suggested moving the date up. That was a great idea, and then we suggested moving that Friday up to Thursday. But to his, to Fred's point, a lot of work with staff to get those numbers, to get those $90, $299 from Mercury or from whatever vendor. They're not as forthright getting that information, and if we wanted on an agenda for the following Monday, we might not be getting that until Wednesday, Thursday.
Yeah, but I think a lot of times we've seen that if you, if you set the standard, right, then maybe it's, maybe it wouldn't, shouldn't have been ready for that meeting. Maybe that should have gone to the next meeting.
And that's what we'll, I mean, we're easing into that process.
Yeah.
You know, so right now, previous, they had to have their agenda items in by next Tuesday was their, was their deadline.
Right.
So it, so for, for next meeting, they would have to have it in by next Tuesday. The staff, that's why you didn't see it till Friday. Now, they have to have it in by tomorrow. So all their agenda items are in tomorrow. We discuss it at, we have a leadership team meeting at 8:30 every Tuesday after council meeting, and they submit their agenda items at that time. We give them a little leeway if they like, I, I'm working on one, I'm not sure if I'm gonna have it yet. We put placeholders in. It's really to set the agenda, not to have all the information yet.
Right.
It's the agenda items, and then we give them a deadline for early, like the Monday, the following Monday, to have everything in, so that we can start the review process, because we have to review all the items, too.
Yeah.
So.
I like it, and I think, I think it holds like, you know, how many times do we have to call you on like a Saturday or Sunday? Because, did you see this language?
Yeah.
Where is this coming from?
Yeah.
Now, you can get it on a workday instead of a... Probably a good idea to make.
I, for the record, try not to call you on Sundays, just, you know. I, for the record, will note that he said try.
So I actually agree with Tom. I, I would love it if we could limit public hearings to one per meeting, because then we have two a couple times, especially if they're lengthy. Is that something that we could do?
Well, just, I'll chime in on that. There are some times where we'll have this discussion on purchase of four new vehicles, two new EVs, and that may not be on the public's mind at that point, but they wanna talk about it afterwards.
Okay.
So that was the only reason why I'd never...
But we don't have public hearing.
And there are, there are other cases where we're required to provide, the council's required to provide an approval for something from the state or from other agencies that they, that they need a council vote on that requires a public hearing, and we don't really dictate how those are gonna be. So you might get one of those and then have something that's already on the agenda, you know, slated, and I just don't wanna limit us.
It's a good goal to have.
We can try, I mean, as a goal, and we can shoot for that and try to push off things that we can, and we actually try to do that now with the agenda. You know, can this wait? You know, because we've got a lot of stuff on the agenda that's gonna take some time. Can this one wait till the next meeting? Yeah, it can probably wait. All right, we're gonna push that one off, and we have that discussion, but...
And limiting public comment to, to five minutes instead of 10 minutes? 10 minutes is a long time.
That's required when a public hearing, public hearing, yeah.
It's a long time.
It's required.
I can't see. We had talked before also about, during public comment, asking people to address us as the council as opposed to kind of addressing one person individually. I know you've said that's happened in other towns you've been part of, is that something?
It's been a request that I've had boards and councils make to the public, that we, you know, you're asked to make your comments to the council as a body, because that's what you're represented here, you're not individuals, and that you not direct them to individuals. They don't have to follow it, because there's, you know, a whole freedom of speech aspect of that, but out of respect, 90% of the people do respect that and follow that, and you have some that don't. And, and if they, I've had, you know, mayors or chairs like remind people, you know, again, we ask you not to direct it at any individual, and again, they can ignore it, but most people adhere to that, because most people don't understand that's generally, you, you act as a body, you do not act as individuals up here, so it should be addressed as a body, so.
I agree.
Okay, what are we doing with the agenda process? Is, we gonna hold on that?
Does it need a, does it need a motion?
Well...
Do we need a motion?
You were comfortable with it? I mean...
Well, so it, this is unfinished business. It was, it was introduced last time. If you wanted to move forward with something, then it would need to go to, to, to a hearing, because it is an ordinance right now.
Yeah.
So, or we can, you can direct me to make some changes, and we can...
Yeah, this, so this is basically for introduction tonight?
It was introduction.
Yep.
It was last time, I brought it back with some changes based upon the comments, so now this would still be technically introduction, yeah.
Okay. I'm comfortable with that.
To move it to a public hearing?
Uh, yeah. As is right now, and then we can...
We can still...
Tweak it without...
Get the public comments, yeah.
Yeah.
Do we, do we need a motion to move it to a public hearing?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Guys are all comfortable with that?
You guys good with that?
Yes. Okay.
Can I ask, is everybody comfortable with what has been discussed, or?
No, I think...
We're gonna move it to a public hearing, which...
Gives, actually, council has latitude to give some suggestions to the town manager, unless they're substantial changes, but if there are ways to make this better, you can give those, and then that will be presented to, or no, this will be presented as a public hearing.
Correct.
But you can make the changes.
As long as it's not substantial, yeah.
As long as it's not substantial, yeah.
If it's substantial, then you gotta do it over again. That's what I was going with it.
Correct.
Is the general opinion that it's okay the way it is?
I don't think so. I had some questions.
I don't have any substantial changes, but I don't have, so...
You know, I want to put it to bed, but, you know, what I'm concerned about is, you know, I get into the agenda setting meeting and I, I question every item that's on the bid, you know, consent.
But you can pull those off.
I know, but, you know, we're gonna end up at, at the same place.
There will never be a consent calendar.
At least it'll be early on the agenda.
Not saying every time, but, you know...
But there's other things that could be a consentable.
Yeah, okay. Just trying to understand where, how it was going to go.
Maybe some of your questions can be answered beforehand if you have questions on the bids or something.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we table the discussion about your software management program?
Yes.
We actually didn't officially table it, did we?
We just didn't move it forward.
We just didn't move it forward in the ARPA. But for...
For the bid, you mean?
This purpose of the agenda, motion to table item four A, budget and appropriate ARPA revenue replacement funds for Granitius Agenda and Meeting Management Software.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Propose nay. Eyes have it. Motion carries. That is held for next meeting. This came to our attention. It comes to our attention every November. This would be the cancellation of the November seventh meeting. That is Monday. It's the first Monday meeting in November. We have heard from the registrars of voters and town clerks that this room is utilized by them for election day activities. This year, no different. There's an election on Tuesday, November eighth at six AM in the morning, so this room would need to be prepped the night before. And any discussion? Any opposition? Consentable. Motion to approve item one on the consent calendar. All those in favors. Motion to eliminate the meeting on November seventh. Okay. Question's been made in seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Propose nay. Eyes have it. Motion carries. Take a look, yes. Take a look at the minutes. Deb Hammer said, sent those over to us earlier today.
Consent agenda. Yes.
Every time.
Yep. This will make it much more efficient.
Could you do that?
Yes, all of those things, those are the last two would be consent agenda.
Well, you said bids.
Tom, you'd be home by now. You'd be, you'd be in your house.
He's gonna make corrections on the minutes. He's gonna pull it.
No, he never happens. Well, once.
Do you want to move the minutes?
Move, move to approve the minutes.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Propose nay. Eyes have it. Motion carries. Oh, sorry, you weren't here.
You don't really need to abstain, but...
Everybody always does. And then now, second, our final public comment section. Anybody wishing to speak? Yes, sir?
Nick Raschew, one twenty-five Walkout Hill Road. After hearing the Maquis discussion, I have a couple humble requests to the council. The first would be to look at what rare earth mining does to the planet because it's in photovoltaic cells, it's in wind turbines, and in fact, in lithium ion batteries that run the Maquis. The second I would ask is to first make sure that our insurance carrier in the town will actually cover them. As you've seen on the news, when Teslas get hit and catch on fire, it takes hours and a bunch of chemicals to put them out. And lastly, my biggest request is if this is environmental or if it's economic, get the data. Because what I heard was twelve months for the police department to do what they want with the vehicle, and I heard nothing that they're going to report back. I didn't hear anything about the economics other than asset forfeiture. So for example, I heard asset forfeiture for buying and putting a charging station in. What I didn't hear was what about maintenance fees? What about the cost of disposal when the batteries run out? I mean, we heard about cars going out years later, two spares and two SROs, which are shocking to me because they had two spares that they need to replace with brand new patrol vehicles. The numbers just, again, keep saying the numbers don't add up. If the maintenance fees are anywhere near what I can expect them to be for the Maquis for the next few years, this doesn't make sense to me. The town may not be bearing the cost upfront because it's through asset forfeiture, but they will bear every dollar of cost from here on out. So again, my humble request, get the economics, figure out the insurance carrier will actually cover it. Because I have a distinct feeling that in public service, I don't know who Westport's carrier is, I'd have severe reservations about if one of those vehicles gets into an accident in this town.
Mr. Young?
Robert Young, twenty Copper Mill Road. Mayor, I was surprised to hear you talk about the lease for the Keisha farm, the farmer that's on the Keisha farm. I mean, the town bought the property four years ago. He's been on there since before you bought it, and now his surface was, you know, about the lease. Where have we been? I mean, we should have had a lease with him the day of the closing. He should have had his certificate of insurance in front of you, in your drawer. He should have had a number of, you know, just to show that his, he has the ability to do what he's doing up there. And here it is, four years later, it's still not done. But then again, we have the Little Red Schoolhouse. They've been in there since the early seventies or the mid-seventies, and they still don't have a lease. And they're costing us money. They're costing us all kinds of utility bills. Doesn't sound good for, for a town, okay? This should all be, where's our lawyer? Where's our town lawyer to protect the citizens? I mean, at the Little Red Schoolhouse, they have clients coming, customers coming and going daily. Anybody can fall and get hurt, and who's, who's the insurance carrier for them? Us. We're going to carry it. I'll go on to the next subject. Tonight, you know, Mr. O'Connor again mentions that the, those who suffered the most were the children, you know? And this money is to help them and this idea of spending money on, on fields, it's for the children. I mean, when he, when he was pouting here for Kattan Field, he had the children coming up here one after the other, asking for lights, asking for turf way back then. He didn't bring them up this time, but he's still working at it. And I don't really believe the children have suffered much at all, Mr. O'Connor. They've sat home, they've done their homework at home, they've all had computers, laptops to communicate. It wasn't like they were in isolation. Older people, the older people did a lot of suffering. They had to stay home. They, they had to call for groceries. They had to do a lot of things. And when they did go out, some of them caught COVID, and some of those people died. But you don't care about that. But then the other ones caught COVID, and they have forever this thing called long-haul problems. It messed up their minds, it messed up their ability to perform, and what happened? Seven point some million dollars came to Weathersfield Town Council. And are they being taken care of with this seven point some million dollars? Of course not. The politicians had to figure out how they're going to take care of their buddies and their friends. And that's exactly what's going on here. And that's what Mr. O'Connor is doing. He's taking care of his buddies and his friends. He wants to put up something. We saw that one night, and that really caught my eye that night. But what he wants is everlasting efforts. And Mr. Lesser wants investments in our future. And I don't think we're getting there with what you're proposing and what you're proposing. You know, Mr. Lesser, you're proposing fields for farming. Farming is a tough business. Absolutely tough. It's seven days a week, it's three hundred and sixty-five days a year, and it's a big expense. And it's also fighting all the pests, the pests that come and eat what you're growing. And this, this town is not a farm town. The price of land is too high to support farming. Farming is a very low margin, if there's much at all. The people do it because they want to do it. But not Weathersfield, you paid seventy-five thousand dollars an acre. If you paid four thousand, now it could be considered making it into a farm. But you paid seventy-five thousand dollars, and, and the only reason you got it passed, and you all know that, why you got it passed, you didn't show the appraisal for that property, which was only one point seven. And you would have died trying to get voters to vote for that if they knew, but you concealed it. But that's Weathersfield, you know? You had a little discussion tonight about moving up the agendas, okay? I'd rather you keep it the way it is. I came here one night and I sat here till, what, one o'clock at night? Maybe a little after? And then I went home a couple of days later and I watched it on television. And there was something I was looking for that I saw here, and it was gone. It was a lot of the so-called disc or the movie. It was missing. But anyway...
Mr. Young, your five minutes are up.
My time is up. One more thing, if you don't mind. Where are, in this seven point some million dollars, where is some money for roads? Pavement, you know? We buy a one million dollars worth of material every year. And every year, the price goes up on the material, which means we get less and less material to spread on our roads. This is a real prime item to put on that list. I mean, look at Beaver Street, Beaver Road. That's a horrible road. Look at right out here on this Church Street piece, all kinds of bumpy, bumpy, bumpy when you're riding over it. And I'm sure the policeman, if you asked him where the bad roads were, they could tell you too. And instead of spending money on these fields, spend them on the highways. We need it. Thank you very much. Thank you for the extra time.
Thank you. One more. Mr. Hall?
Chris Hall on Garden Street. I just wanted to address the gate, locked gate medals issue. I wasn't going to speak, but I was hoping to hear a little more of the discussions about why you would table it because you want to find out more. I just wanted to give you guys some of the, I've been a member of the game club, and I'm not speaking on their behalf at all. I'm just speaking on my own as a member. Since I was a kid, I was born into the club. And there's been a lot of, over the years, different talk of gates, no gate. I remember when that gate was close to the exit ramp and before Putnam Park was even there, that was an old dump we'd drive by. But as encroachment would come along, we'd wonder how far it's going to come in, where the gate is. And a lot of discussions at the fire pit, so to speak, about solving world problems. And among them, we used to talk about things that would keep the roads from being shut down or who would take care of them. So I just wanted to bring up to you as a whole, not individual, and just while you're, I don't know the whole process of tabling, but I'm sure you're going to come back. I want to just give you some info of things that we used to talk about. When they put in that big gate and it was open and closed by the town, it wasn't an issue. But once it was kind of up to members and, and landowners to do it, there's members that can't open the gate because they're either handicapped or old, even with permission, with a key. They go to the Elm Street gate when the lock isn't damaged or whatever. So you might, there might be an issue with putting in a new gate that's easily opened by everyone. The, I noticed discussion about people want to go down there to get permission, what's, what's warranting permission for recreational use, launching a canoe sort of thing. As far as I know, if not all, maybe ninety percent of any access to any water, anything, you have to go from the road, which is public, across private land and then put anything in, whether it's fishing, a boat. So you're talking about having to cross private land to do anything down there besides walk the road. And if someone falls, that landowner is then, I assume, liable because we've had lawsuits before. That has to be discussed. Sharing costs, if you can't fix the road yourself, that's okay if you have the equipment. Where landowners as a game club, the most we have is a tractor. We also don't have access to the material that is often brought down to fix the roads. So it'd be a shift of burden on certain landowners that have the equipment. And now you're talking about not pitting landowner against landowner, but now you've got one landowner group that is maybe now indebted to the other landowner group because they're the ones that can, only ones that can fix the road. And I'm not sure if, I don't know about the town rules or waterway rules. We always thought that the town, when we were interested in buying some of the road rights or whatever from the town, they had to leave it town property and take care of the roads because of access for Coast Guard to get to the beacons. And I believe that was the same reason we couldn't lock the gate for a while. But I'm talking years of different presidents and discussions. So that's something to think about. So, and then another thing is, yes, signage is great because many times we'd sat there, even when DMV was closed, and there'd be people that take that exit ramp and they take the wrong turn looking for DMV, years of pointing people the other way. Better signage should have been there a long time ago, but definitely complete signage should be part of it. And, yeah, I, it, less control on, or less restrictions is nice, but allowing people to go down there just because they want to have a nice ride with their car doesn't automatically mean that they're going to be good polite drivers slash parkers. You mentioned the heavy equipment going through there. Many times we've had an eighteen wheeler blowing a horn because someone parked on the corner and they couldn't get their turf truck around, and it wasn't us, but they don't know that. They just see a car. We have stickers in our cars, they don't. But it's just another, one of the reasons we tried to keep the gate at least closed, if not locked, so people wouldn't come down and get in the way to landowners. But that's all. I just wanted to bring those things to your attention, those are just a lot of old school talks that we've had over the years. Yeah, I've been in since I was officially like fourteen, I'm fifty-two now, so we've, we've had a lot of brainstorming. So that's all.
Thank you. Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
Move we adjourn.
Second. Motion's been made in seconded. All those in...